Well, good morning. Do we know what Castle is doing?
He's not attending.
Not attending at all? Okay, alright. Makes it easy. Oh. Hope he doesn't slap anybody. He would never do that.
It's a different culture, sir.
If I ever get an award for something, I'm gonna take my chance. Whack. Alright. How dare you give me an award? Well, good morning. Officially called to one of the regular meeting of the Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors. It didn't really look like a slap. It looked a little more like he hit him with the heel of his hand, right? I mean, in my view, it wasn't a slap. It was more a punch. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2021-43. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person at CBWD Steve Robbins Administration Building, and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing district board members to participate in person or by video conference. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda. The meeting is streamed live on the district's website and the YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to comment on any item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person, via Zoom, or by emailing the clerk or the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. We will have all of the board members attending in person. We'll have one board member absent, but will not be attending remotely, so I don't think we need to worry too much about roll call votes, etc. That's that. So, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
End roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
We'll note Vice President Estrada's absent, Director Bianco, Director Aguilar,
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Good. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Nor to mine? So, public comment. Is there any member of the public wishing to make public comment at this time? And if you're on Zoom, and we will have opportunity for public comment. I know there may be some folks who want to comment on Item 8A, which is the implementation of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. We can take that up at that time, but if there's non-agenda items, now would be a time. And if you're on Zoom, if you use the raise hand feature to get our attention, that would be helpful.
And I don't show anybody raising their hand at this time, Mr. President.
Okay. And I don't see anyone present wishing to make public comment either. So, five items A through D is the consent calendar.
Mr. President, at the request of staff, I would like to pull Item 5D,
I guess I wanted to change the agenda.
Finance. I would like to pull that item and discuss that.
So, from consent to action.
Correct.
Which one is that?
5D, the resolution.
Delta.
Closing resolution.
5 Delta. Okay. Alright, so the balance of the consent calendar, 5A through C. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Mr. President, I'm gonna have to abstain from A, B, and C. Oh, okay.
I'll second.
A, B, and C.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one abstention and one absent. Okay, so that passed. And then, item pulled from the consent calendar is this resolution on the Kerry Swaini. What is this?
Good morning. So, this item we had to pull to consent because actually the action has to be approved as an action item through consent. So, we had requested for it to be moved. And I actually also have a revised closing resolution. So, we were initially when we submitted the agenda item, most of the items were still blank because we were waiting for information from State Water Resource Board. And now that they have some figures, we have a revised closing resolution, which I'm gonna hand out to the board or give it to.
Thank you. I did notice a lot of blanks.
You can.
Thank you.
Kerry, I had a question. Is there anything in the resolution that's been filled out that is substantively different than what was in the staff report?
No, it was not. It's just filling in the blanks in terms of the law agreement and the law amount, and the rate is remiss.
Thank you.
Is this completed resolution available on our website?
It will be.
It will be.
It will be. The changes were just made yesterday afternoon, so we were not able to update the website at that time with less than 24 hours. But we will have copies available for members of the public.
Okay.
Yeah, so the agreement itself, it's still on its draft form. The reason why it's brought to you, this is an unusual situation. Normally, we have most of the agreement in its final form. However, due to, to take advantage of being exempt from the Baba requirement, State Water Resource Board has asked us to approve the closing resolution, and also a draft of the installment sales agreement because it is due to them by next Monday. So, we are expecting State Water Resource Board to provide us the final agreement to be signed by Jim Barrett, hopefully the end of this week, and to turn that around and submit that to them for the agreement. If there's any other questions?
This is this is for?
Non potable.
Non potable water connections.
Is this for the water in the channel?
I'm sorry?
This is for the non-
Non potable water connections for this year.
No, sir, it's not in the channel. There's a number of different projects to include Sunset County, Sunset Country Club, Annenberg Estate, Rancho Mirage Country Club, Temerous Country Club, Tri-Pong Country Club, Jack Ivey Country Club, Indian Wells Tennis Garden, Palm Royale Country Club, and Southwest Church.
And so, we're paying this money to? I didn't get to review it, so.
So, we're getting a loan and a grant.
Okay. And this is just to finalize the agreement?
Finalize the agreement, yes. So, this project is being funded partially by restricted funds, and also we're getting a grant of $5 million, and then the loan of $10 and a half million for a total of 27 funding for this project.
Hey Jeff, I have a question for you. So, I'm a member of Southwest Church, and it's, you know, I'm not on the board. I'm not, I'm just a member of the church. Is this a conflict of interest for me?
Unless you had a real property interest within the proximity to the church, or you had a financial interest through the church that would be benefited by approving this, then no. You would not have a conflict of interest.
Okay, alright. Thank you. I don't have any of those.
Got it.
Right. I think you're safe.
So, the answer is no, you do not have a conflict.
Thank you.
Good. Alright Kerry, I think, I think we understand, or at least I think I understand this.
So, it's basically to approve the resolution and to authorize me the the ability to sign the agreements when they're actually finalized. It has to, the state is saying they need these finalized documents by the 15th. So, unfortunately, it doesn't give us a lot of time.
No, and it's a great rate and everything. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Why don't we vote then? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passed 4-0. Thanks, Kerry. So, other board actions, what does that refer to? Item 7 on the agenda.
So, that is a placeholder. I apologize, that should have been removed. That is where we will list when the board takes action as a different board example, the Oasis Board, the Public Facilities Corporation.
Understood. Alright. We have a new format for our agenda, so that's new.
Really exciting.
And then, the action calendar. And, you know, I kinda like the organization of it. Appreciate the, kind of putting it into departments.
And so, as I mentioned in my email, I am open to any feedback comments that the board may have. We are just rolling this out.
We all have comments on-
We all have comments. I've heard some.
We all have comments on the website thing.
Yes, and I, we will work through that.
A little, it was a little rough. Okay, so why don't we move into our action calendar. 8A is implementation of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And we'll do a staff presentation, Scott, and then if we have public comment, we'll take that. I think I'd rather take that before we get to a board discussion.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Scott Burrit. I'm the Director of Service and Communication. And I have Jenna Schuman, who's the Conservation Manager. This is a follow-up item to our March 22nd informational item to the board on implementation of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Since that March 22nd meeting, the governor issued an executive order on March 28th, and it requested the State Water Resource Control Board to take two actions that pertain to us, and specifically requiring urban water suppliers to move to shortage level 2 in their water shortage contingency plan. And the second is to consider banning the irrigation of non-functional turf for commercial, industrial, and institutional customers. So, non-functional turf is defined as ornamental and not otherwise used for human recreation, such as the turf at parks, schools, and sports fields. That would be permitted. In anticipation of the prohibition of irrigating non-functional turf, we're developing a list of customers that might be impacted, and creating an outreach plan for them to kind of move towards rebates now rather than waiting for the ban to take effect. And the governor's executive order envisioned the State Water Board taking action by May 25th. At our last meeting, the board had a number of ideas and recommendations for moving forward. The first one was increasing the turf rebates. And so, that's one of our recommendations. And I did have a brief email I wanted to read from David Donahue. He's an HOA board member from Casa Rosada in Indian Wells. And he said, "We're currently in planning phases of converting areas surrounding two pools to desert-friendly landscaping." However, estimates for these projects have risen considerably over the last year. Our board was given a plus or minus 10% cost deviation for these projects, but estimates have been 40% more comparable for comparable projects they completed last summer. So, you know, because of the cost increases, boards are considering, HOAs are considering deferring these projects. And he had a recommendation to increase the per square foot rebate to 350 from the current level of $2. Our recommendation is $3, and I know you discussed four, so our recommendation remains $3, but you could make a change to that. Let's see, Director Bianco, you requested us to kind of reexamine our processes, our internal processes for processing rebates to make it a little bit easier. So, we have an internal group that are reviewing all of those processes. We do want it to be easy for customers to apply for rebates and and not have to jump through a lot of hoops. So, we would like to be able to make those changes without coming back to board in the future, but assuring you that those changes are gonna be more customer-friendly. And this really changes the forms and processes rather than policy. There was a lot of discussion about Vice President Estrada's suggestion that we pay rebates directly to landscape companies. And I know President Powell, you suggested that maybe we have some sort of voucher that landscapers could use. So, what we've done is scheduled a meeting with a small group of landscapers. We invited about 15 large landscape companies and artificial turf companies to a meeting here at the district. It's a brainstorming session. It's scheduled for next week, April 19th. And if any other landscapers are listening to this, you're more than welcome to attend. Contact me. So, we are, we are planning on looking at what we could, what we could implement in terms of some sort of direct models with the landscapers. And, you know, internally, we've had discussions. There could be a contracting process involved or an RFP process that might make it difficult for landscapers to become involved, but there are the voucher programs, and there are other models. And we'll discuss that at the board meeting, or at the brainstorming session and bring that back to a future board meeting. And I know Director Aguilar, you wanted to implement shortage level 2 sooner. And you are interested in our marketing and kind of outreach plan, which we've attached. And Lorraine Garcia from our communication office is available to answer questions about that. And, you know, the, one of the big ones, you know, was the, the reduction of the outdoor water budget. So, we've been in touch with BB&amp;K over the last couple of weeks, and we would like to, we have to have some discussions regarding Prop 218 and implementation or reducing the outdoor water budget. And again, that's something we would like to bring back. We don't want to make a recommendation that would get us in trouble down the road. And finally, I know Director Nelson, you had a concern about the land, the kind of postage stamp template for projects, and you know, I would just like to point out that staff would continue to go out and do inspections afterwards to make sure projects are are performed in, you know, in a way that would be attractive for the community and still environmentally friendly and conserve water.
That, Scott, revolves around your communication with the contractors.
Right.
Director Nelson, your mic, I apologize. Thank you.
So, I think that that discussion really revolves around with meeting with the contractors and the and the company, landscape companies.
Right.
Because, you know, I see some of the costs in the report that are significantly higher than the $3 per square foot.
Right.
And if a homeowner would go out and contract with someone and try and minimize that cost to the homeowner, they may end up putting in something that costs less than $3 or $4 a square foot, just gravel and one cactus, right? So, I mean, that's the real fear. So, in those discussions, I think it's, it would be good to, you know, have a strategy to, you know, kind of combat that phenomenon that we saw in LA.
Okay. And I think our post-inspection process would kind of work towards that. Because we definitely don't want that either. And Jenna, did you have something to add on the the rebate?
For our current procedures, you have to have 25% canopy, plant canopy coverage, so there wouldn't be just one cactus allowed. You would have to be, and it's for the entire new area. It doesn't take into account existing landscaping. It'd be only for the turf area being converted. So, we are looking into some templates that would be the minimum of 25%, and then getting some cost estimates from these contractors on some more, you know, dense coverage, up to, not full coverage, but, you know, some larger plants could potentially get full coverage. So, we are looking into, not just our bare minimum, but providing some offerings for more coverage, too.
Yeah, fantastic. I, you know, I don't want to get into the business of, you know, telling people what to plant, but at the same time, you know, we, I think we can have a strategy that helps the community out, save water, and have a win-win-win situation. So, thanks.
Okay.
You know, I think we should be offering more money for the turf. We should have two different prices. One for turf and one for desert landscaping. And my reasoning behind that is turf, artificial turf is zero water. I mean, that's, that's zero. That's, that's the biggest bang for your buck. Still makes the, the grounds look good. So, I mean, that's, that's the way I would go. I mean, $3 square foot doesn't, you know, when it's 6 to 20, and it's probably more like the average is 10, right? Or 15.
Better 12.
Yeah, depending on the quality of the artificial turf.
Correct.
And, and we did have some data, so we're planning on updating the information that we report to the board on a monthly basis to make it a little bit more transparent on our water conservation efforts, you know, related to the governor's executive order comparing us, you know, current month to 2020. And so, did you want to go through the PowerPoint on that and talk a little bit about?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can go to the next slide. So, this is just to review what was in the staff report regarding the various portions of shortage level 2 and then level 3 that we were considering implementing. And so, this is just a look at our well production data, and this is what we use to report to the state regarding our efforts to comply with the reduction versus 2013 and also versus 2020. And so, you can see kind of a trend, you know, throughout the year. Obviously, during the summer months, it gets a little bit higher in consumption because the weather has gotten hotter. And then, in the spring and the winter, it is lower.
And this is just domestic well production?
Correct. This is just domestic well production. Thank you. And so, when we report to the state, we use this data times, you know, the percent of residential customers, and that's how we calculate our residential per capita usage. And so, that's what's usually reflected in the media and also on the state's website. So, this is just the percent changes versus 2020, and I always want to caveat this with saying that 2020 is not a very good reflection year for areas such as ours, where hospitality and tourism are a big industry. In the early 2020, we didn't have the same number of people coming to the valley that we normally would have seen. And so, now by 2022 here, we are starting to see those numbers return to mostly normal. And so, consumption was fairly low in 2020, and now it's back to standard. So, if we compare this to 2019, these numbers would look a little bit different.
So, in the future, when we do these presentations, could we put a column with 2019? That would be helpful to me because, you know, we say that all the time. 2020 is not a good year, right? You know, I'd like to see what a good year is.
Yeah. And we just put this because this is what the state requires us to reflect against. But yeah, we can definitely add 2018 because it paints a far more accurate picture.
So, in my thinking, or if I'm talking with someone, I can say, yeah, 2020, but, you know, that was a COVID year, and things were really out of whack here, so let's look at the column 2019. This is what the real comparison is.
Definitely. I like that. It paints a more accurate picture of how we're doing. And then, our turf rebates, this is how they've performed since fiscal year 2011. You can see residential there is in blue, and the HOA commercial program is there in the orange reddish color. And you can see during the drought years, participation peaked as we would expect. And then, in fiscal year 2018 is when the board approved changing from one, increasing from $1 per square foot to $2 per square foot. And I would say that's what attributed and not tapering off as quickly as it did in 2019. 2018 participation, if you looked at the dollar amounts, was rather high just because we do believe that, I think we maxed out that year and also came back to the board and requested additional funds just because we had such a high level of participation that year. Which I think it would have definitely dipped down much further had we not increased the dollar per square foot.
So, if I just took those numbers and divided by in the period that was $2 a square foot, would I pretty much have what the square foot
That is the, that is the square foot change right there, not the dollar amount. So, this is how many square feet were reported to the whole landscaping. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought this was dollars.
No. The dollars one would be much higher.
Let's say you have 2.5 million square feet or 3 million square feet, which would be a pretty good year. Which I, we can probably get there if we set the price right, but, but at $3, that's, that's $9 million. At $4, it's $12 million. Can, can we, where would we get those dollars? Do we have enough? Can we afford $3 or $4 at 3 million square feet?
So, right now, I think the idea is that, you know, we're looking at finishing this year with a million-dollar surplus in this budget. So, it's $1 million unspent on turf rebates. I mean, I would just like to get to the point where we're spending that money.
To, to June 30th.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if that, but if we're doing, let's say you do, you know, 700,000 square feet or 800,000 square feet, that's only 1.6 million. So, what was your budget, 2.5?
Yeah, yeah, about.
Was about 2.5?
Yeah.
But we're talking about, you know, incentivizing more behavior, more conversion at $3. That's, if that's really $9 million, that's a big jump from 2.5 to 9. I mean, the one surplus helps, but it only helps a little bit. So, you still have a pretty big, you know, $5 million more. We're gonna, we're gonna need to find those dollars somewhere, right?
Yeah, if we were to come back to the board, and, I mean, I, I think at that point, you know, and this isn't a financial request today, but if we were to come back to the, if you increased it to 3, and we were to go through all of that money next year, then we would come back to the board at some point and either request the additional funding or stop the program for the year. So, and that has happened in the past, I believe. We have run out of money, and so you know, that would be a decision that we would have to make at that point. I get, the board would have to make.
Yeah. I mean, just if we're making a decision on $3 or $4, I mean, and honestly, you know, if we want it to work, $4 is gonna work better than 3.
Right.
Right? Obviously.
But it's only gonna work so long as there's money.
So long as there's money. So, we may find ourselves, you know, you get to a million square feet and you're done because you ran out of money, and then, then you haven't really accomplished anything.
I mean, we could pull money from the reserves if needed, but that creates the need to replace the money in the reserves if it has dropped below the guidelines.
But why haven't you accomplished anything?
Because you'd be at the same number of square feet that you have now at $2.
But right now, we're not using it.
Correct.
Well, I understand that. But, but let's say you, you convert 800,000 this year, which was not a very good year, right? It's a low year, money left over, etc. At $4, you may only be able to do 800,000 square feet because that's all the money you have. That's my point. So, we need to be ready to, if we really want it to be successful, we need to find another 5 million or 6 million to cover it.
So, so why don't we, why don't we do the desert landscaping, keep it at 2, and the turf go to 4?
Artificial turf.
Artificial turf. That's gonna get you the most.
I know, I, I know what you're saying. I hadn't thought about it. I think it's a good idea. I just wonder if if that's too specific of an incentive. Now, you're incentivizing people to cover their yards in plastic.
No, 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 no. It, it costs more to do turf.
I know it does.
It costs a lot more.
And it uses less water. I get it.
It uses zero water, not less, zero.
Zero, yeah.
Zero.
Would we still require some sort of coverage? Percentage of coverage even with artificial turf?
I mean, what we're trying to do is, is, and the reality is, is to try and incentivize people not to just turn their water off completely and go dead. Right? And that's what we don't want in our community. Is everybody, the cost getting so high that people just turn their water off completely, and things die.
Right?
Right? I mean, I would think every neighbor would, would.
One of the cost drivers is when you need rebates.
Yeah, the, I mean, we're not talking about raising people's rates here.
Well, we're talking about changing some of the metrics in this, too. I mean, that's part of the proposal going forward.
So, we would come back to, you know, after we consult with BB&amp;K, we would come back to look at lowering the outdoor water budget. And so, that could, that will generate additional revenue at the higher tiers if the board were to adopt that proposal.
Which are what fund these programs?
And the other, the other, the other action here that I think will have a big impact, and, you know, we don't, we're compiling the list and looking at the accounts right now, but the the ban on irrigation of non-functional turf, you know, how we implement that could, could be a big driver as well. One of the things we were talking about doing, and, you know, we have to look at these accounts as possibly reducing the areas of their property that are non-functional turf, reducing the water budget accordingly.
And just to be clear, you're not talking about homeowners here?
No, I'm not talking, no, this is just for commercial.
People are listening. They might think you're talking about homes.
Thank you. Yeah, this is for
Those are commercial properties.
Commercial, institutional, and industrial.
And non-recreational.
But not parks.
Not parks.
Yeah, recreation is is exempt.
And there's also an exception for, you know, at least that the Water Board has to define what, you know, fully what non-functional turf is, but there's also an exception for areas with trees and other landscaping.
So recognizing we've had a lot of discussion about potential recommendations moving forward, you're specifically asking the board to do what today?
So today, we're asking the board to adopt.
All that.
There's seven recommendations. So prohibit the outdoor water use through spray irrigation during daylight hours. Request shortage level 2.2, restaurants can only serve water upon request. Shortage level 2.4, agency shall actively discourage overseeding. 2.6, agency shall expand public information campaign, which we have in that in that handout or the attachment to the board action item. Increase water waste patrols and encourage counties, cities, HOAs and other enforcement agencies to suspend code enforcement and fines for brown turf grass areas and to otherwise comply with new state laws regarding limitations on such enforcement. And expand the rebate programs by expanding the turf rebates from $2 to $3 per square foot. Those are the specific recommendations.
And so the, you said 25% coverage?
Is the minimum requirement.
Is still in, it's, that's in, already in an existing ordinance that?
That's in the program requirements, the term and agreements, the terms and conditions, excuse me.
Terms and conditions of the rebate program?
Correct.
So and I'm imagining that artificial turf is not included in canopy.
Consider that to be 100% canopy cover because it reflects, it looks like a plant.
Okay, so you're counting it as canopy?
Correct.
Fake grass? Okay. All right, well, then that eliminates one of the.
It reflects 180 degrees off of the turf.
I know. And and I have it at my house. I it is amazing what it does to your water budget. I mean, it it changes everything because, I mean, I took out four sprinkler valves, you know. So cut them out. It works really well. So so I I mean, I kind of like the, you know, 350 or maybe you have a split rate. Do you think we can do a split rate? You think that's legal? Where we pay more for fake grass than we do for desert landscaping?
I mean, the water savings would be, as you mentioned, they're 100% versus, you know, new plants are going to need water.
Yeah, they do.
What need water? So I mean, you're basically paying for savings or.
No, and somebody might say, well, then we'll just put in rocks, but then the rocks don't meet the 25% coverage ratio and they're cheaper than the turf, so you don't really need the money for the rocks, yeah. Or the DG, yeah. You want to, you want to propose that? I mean, it's an interesting concept. Three, three for for turf conversion, but if you go to fake grass, it's four?
I mean, aren't we just trying to get through this year to spend the extra million dollars to incentivize people to?
But it'll.
We don't want another year that looks like this where we're not spending our funds.
It'll be in place next year too. Recognizing we may need to find another 5 million. I mean, if it really works, do what it's designed to do, it's, the budget's going to run out.
Well, let me just make sure, confirm with staff that if they make a change to the turf and desert landscape rebates, that will stay in effect until the board changes it again.
Correct.
It is not tied to, you know, this particular drought level or contingency response plan item. It stays until the board decides to change it again.
Correct.
Correct.
Wonder if there's grant money for turf rebates?
Well, there's drought resiliency money that is available through USBR, but I mean, there are certain conditions. Clearly, agencies are looking to reduce the demands on the supplies they control. From a state fund, state revolving fund, I don't know that the drinking water state revolving fund has any drought or conservation incentives right now, but our our experience with getting money from the state is it typically takes two years.
Yeah.
From application to receipt of funds, and so it's just not responsive.
And in addition to that, typically, the programs for rebates are if you don't have funds and you're not putting any, anything in now, it's to either create or add additional. So like a lot of smaller agencies will utilize this if they only have like $10,000 to put to rebates. They can get grant funding to really bolster up their program. So whereas we have a good budget for it, we're not really an ideal candidate for the state.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, just just to be clear what we're doing today. The governor has ordered the State Water Resources Control Board to come out with rules and regulations as to how water providers need to move to level two water shortage, but we're not there yet. The state board's not there yet. We're not here there yet today either. The recommendation is to take certain enforcement measures from stage two and put them into effect now. And and these are things that can help us when we get to that point where we may have to move to level two.
Right.
If you have to move to level two, that would be after the state board comes out with their guidance. And then at that point, you would need to decide whether or not to impose penalties. Right now, your water plan, conservation plan has in it penalties if individuals in stage two move beyond their budget amounts. And that can be imposed. What was talked about at the last board meeting was not a penalty for exceeding a budget, but having some way to reduce the amount of water used within a budget. The concern is that budgets are set up based on the cost of water as you move through your budget to higher tiers. If we wanted to have a penalty amount, that's a not, is not a Prop 218 event, we can do that, but that has to be a a different penalty that would have to come back, one, after the state orders us to level two, two, a resolution that explains what we're going to do here at at this level. So today, the recommendation is based based on the board direction at the last meeting to come up with measures from stage two, but not moving to to actual stage two yet because the the state is still providing that guidance. So that's all that we're deciding to do.
Yeah, no, good. Good explanation, Jeff. Thanks. You know, one other thing before we take action, I just want to check in with the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment at this time?
We do. Let me move. We miss, we have Ms. Alina Kalimatis, and I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak. Please let me know when you are on. Alina?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I had a quick question, but a lot of other comments. Are golf courses included in shortage level 2.1 with outdoor water use prohibited because they they do water a lot during the day? And the the other thing I wanted to say is that, because I suspect you couldn't, can't answer that question for me. But the other thing I wanted to talk about is, you know, for every diversion from the canal for golf courses and wave parks, that's less water that's going to be making it two, three punishment facilities. We really, and and with the restaurants, I was just calculating the wave pool in La Quinta is 18 million gallons to fill. Do you know that that's 144 million 16-ounce glasses of water in a restaurant? 144 million glasses of water. So there's a lot of conservation that has to be done for areas outside of residential or, you know, businesses with their turf or grass areas. We really need to do, we we need your leadership to go talk to the golf courses like PGA West and tell them, hey, water mostly are fairways. It's okay. Talk to, everybody should understand, we live in the desert with a drought. It's okay to let the rough turn brown. I mean, it's, we need to make impacts that will really make a difference to our aquifer and and just keep taking canal water to water our golf courses. It's not going to to do that for us. So we it, we need to see a lot more leadership when it comes to things like golf courses and decreasing water usage at golf courses. And and I know you won't do anything about about wave parks, but that is just the winds event, the wind event we had last night, the amount of water that would be taken off of those, you know, 16 acres of of water or the 24 acres in Rancho Mirage with the Disney project, that's an incredible amount of water that's being wasted. So your leadership has to be involved to start making differences where it's going to actually count. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you also for your comments. And just to clarify, what we're discussing today is our domestic water system, and I don't believe we have any golf courses that use that system to irrigate the golf course itself. So that would, that would not be under this program.
Yes, we do. Not all of them have canal water yet. So is that the?
No, we don't. And and so, yeah, appreciate your comments. Thank you.
So on that, you know, to the extent that that golf courses are irrigating with domestic water, so there could be some areas around their clubhouse or other areas, they would, that prohibition for daytime irrigation would apply to them. But if they're using private wells and they're a rack customer, then that prohibition would not apply to them. So in answer to that question, and we are working with, and I appreciated those comments because we are working with the Gulf and Water Task Force to end golf courses to, you know, try to figure out how we can drive conservation and maybe maybe we could get some voluntary agreement to to, for golf courses not to irrigate during the day.
Right, thank you. All right. Do we have anyone else wishing to comment?
I do not see any other raise hand features. If anybody would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature at this time. No others.
Thank you. Do appreciate the the input. All right, back to the board then.
John, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. So there are other water agencies and other water districts that are affected by the drought, not just ourselves. So to what extent can you share any information we have about what others are doing? I mean, we all either have the same aquifer or feeds into the same aquifer. So it seems that we would want to have a cooperative effort, and I expect that's going on, but I think it's important for the public to hear that. That's my first question.
Okay.
And then my second question is, and I believe this is the item it was contained in, there was reference to an internal control auditor position?
Yes, not a position, a consultant that we're going to bring in.
Okay, it says internal controls auditor.
Yeah.
And so I I need to hear more about that, and is that a new position and is that in the budget and?
So it's not a new position. It was a consultant that would come in and look at our existing processes and make recommendations for streamlining and also making sure there's accountability and checks and balances in the processes because they do distribute a lot of public funds. And so we want to make sure that those public funds are being distributed appropriately.
Sure.
So we we had that same process in the customer billing department when I first became the director, and it was a very good process to ensure that we had good practices in place.
Okay.
So and it's not a position, it's a one-time, it'll be less than $25,000 for that project.
Okay.
And one time.
One time only?
One time.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my first question?
Yes, to your first question. So CVWD is part of CV Water Counts. It's comprised of six, the six water agencies in the Coachella Valley. It's focused on conservation. Those water agencies collaborated in developing the Coachella Valley Urban Water Management Plans, which include the Water Supply Shortage Contingency Plan or Water Shortage Contingency Plan. We tried to align our activities in the shortage levels, and that was actually one of my last points to bring up that I didn't bring up. You know, it's important as we move forward with all the other water agencies that we have consistent messaging so that we can do some regional advertising. And if we have a daylight irrigation ban, the idea is that all the water agencies move towards that daylight irrigation ban so we can kind of have economies of scale in advertising and reach the entire valley. During the last drought, there were some, there was some confusion among our residents. You know, if you were in desert water agency area and they had a Monday, Tuesday ban and we had a Wednesday, Thursday ban on watering, you know, the message got, it was a little bit difficult for customers to keep track. So we do have that collaboration happening right now.
Thank you.
I'm not in favor of shorts level 2.1 not going into the summer here here in the desert. I think that's a really drastic move. I'll be honest with you, it's really hard for me to tell the public that we need to not water during the day when there are city councils approving wave parks and and different things. And and it it doesn't make sense to me. The outdoor watering thing, I believe, is is going to be very difficult when it's 120 degrees. I think you're going to have to overwater in the evening severely to get enough water on to get you through that period. That's, 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 that's my opinion. Going into the summer, I.
We did implement that previously, didn't we, during the 2015? We. Daylight defining.
We also had day, certain days that were off days, which I didn't like because of the confusion.
Right.
Factor.
But at least that's, that's not a complete outdoor.
Yeah, and this, well, this is a spray only, so if you have other ways of irrigating, those are allowed during the day, but spray would not be. So is this one of the ones that the CV Water Counts group is agreeing on at this point?
We aligned all of our, all the agencies aligned every stage with the exception, we have recycled water and not every agency does. So there's a few things that certain agencies have that are specific to them, but otherwise, everything aligns across the shortage levels.
And we have the outdoor water budgets that we can reduce, whereas desert water agency doesn't have.
Yeah, I get it. So 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 that would create, I mean, so then we'd be back in that same problem where if the five other agencies adopt 2.1 and we don't, then how do we do the messaging? That'd be a problem. Okay, so we don't have to do any of this, but I think there was a sense that we wanted to get ahead of it and not wait. So I guess I'm looking for action and possibly with a different way of doing the turf rebates as discussed earlier. Is anybody interested in making a motion?
Well, if we can bifurcate this, I don't know, colleagues, how we would do this, but I would be interested in seeing recommendations come back to us along the lines of what's been suggested today. So clearly, we can't take action on that, but I would like to see some specific recommendations if that's possible. I'm not sure that that can be done today because it wasn't agendaized, but, sorry, go ahead. Oh, anyway.
Yeah, go ahead.
I thought you were going to say something. So however, I do agree with the recommendations as submitted and our our climate condition is only getting worse, it's not going to get better, and I think this is a good step forward. So I would make the motion to implement the Water Shortage Contingency Plan Demand Reduction Actions as submitted.
So that would be including the turf rebate from the current $2 per square foot to the?
Yes.
$3, yeah.
And we'll likely have to come back after the State Water Board takes action on the governor's executive order. So and we're also exploring the reduction in the water budget. So we will be back in the next month or two just for your information.
Do we, do we think that this shortage level 2.1 with a daylight spray, is that something that we we are seeing in the governor's or the state's?
They put it on each agency to come up with their own plan that meets their service needs.
So it's really up to the, but then we have the other agencies in the valley that are moving in that direction.
Correct.
Have anyone, has anyone taken action yet? Do we? Have anyone, has anyone taken action yet, do we know?
We were the first to get something on our board agenda.
Yeah.
And if I may, when the state board comes out with this guidance and says that the water providers need to reduce by 20%, then we're gonna have to revisit at that point a resolution that does include some level of penalties for violating the water conservation plan and perhaps something on top of or because someone exceeds their budget, and more strict watering days per week. So this is coming back with...
So daylight hours, I mean, if I look on my iPhone, it tells me what time the sunrise and sunset are. Is that what we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, so you have time...
It's ever changed throughout the season.
So you have morning hours that you can...
You have, you have, you have a long sun.
No, I know.
Of daylight.
I know.
So you have morning hours to get a lot of water on.
Right, well, if sunrise is at 6:00 AM, you're gonna irrigate at 5:30.
And it goes, and it gets dark at 8:00.
Right.
Right, so you have 8 to 6 to put on three or four sets of water.
Yeah.
Three or four sets of water you're gonna have to do to keep things going or they're gonna wilt.
Yeah, so then enforcement and, enforcement and penalties, what if, are, we're talking about wat, water waste patrols, right?
Right.
So what happens if they drive up in the middle of the day and they see someone spraying their, their irrigation? What, what happens then? Would we give them a warning or...
First, they'd get a courtesy notice just explaining what the new regulations are and trying to educate them. And from there, if they don't respond, and if it's a leak and they don't respond, or if it's this kind of issue, they don't correct it, then they would move into our citation process. It starts at $50 for the first citation and can move up. But we, at every step, we're trying to contact them to get them aware of what's the issue.
That daylight savings, I mean, that daylight hour works in most places in California, but I don't believe it works here.
The spray, it's...
To do that seven days a week, that is, that is months on end, months on end. Before, it was different, when it was just Mondays and Thursdays, you couldn't do that. But you're talking months on end where you're telling everybody you cannot turn the water on during the day if you have a spray.
We also have rebate programs that try and push people to get their other plants that aren't turf onto drip irrigation so that they'd be able to irrigate, so that plants wouldn't suffer. I mean, in ten years to save water and...
How can you do all this? It's summertime, it's gonna be 100 degrees in a couple, two weeks. I mean, how can we, how can people just do those things so quickly?
If the state asks us, tells us, we have to do 20% conservation.
We'll have to do more drastic than this.
Well, I think, I think, I think Director Bianco's argument is that you're not gonna use less water, that that might actually force you to use more water because you have to get it soaked before the sun comes up, right? I mean, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you may end up using more.
Yeah, and I don't discount any of the concerns, you know, Director Bianco, about how this will work as a practical matter, but if and when the state board comes back and says you shall reduce by 20%, we're gonna have to look at these and even more serious measures in order to enforce it. We just don't want to give you the false impression that this is it for what we'll have to do.
What if we, what if we, I know this is gonna mess up the CV Water Counts thing, but, but I get why that's not feasible. What if we said instead of daylight, say between 10:00 AM and sunset?
I don't know that we can change it.
That gives people time, because those hours are typically the cool hours, you know, where...
Where there's less evaporation.
Where there's less evaporation. I mean, maybe 10:00 AM isn't the right number, but you see what I'm saying? So that you have some time in the morning to get the water on, and you don't have as long a, you know, now you're only dealing with the shorter window. Because I don't think you should be irrigating spray at 3:00 PM on a summer day. I mean, that doesn't work.
It's gonna evaporate before it's...
But before 10:00, it's, I think it's, it's fine to do that, and it's probably better than soaking it at 5:00 AM and hoping to get...
A lot of people have their, their irrigation systems where you have some spray and some drip. I mean, it's, it's not as easy as everyone thinks.
No, I know, and it's...
But you have a clock, I mean, you have a clock, you can have those, those stations come on at, in the morning before 10:00, and the drip come on all afternoon.
Which we get prepared for free.
You've done your drip so that it doesn't, you can put in drip so it doesn't put very much water up.
Right, right, right. So you're going every day, right? So all you do is schedule your clock so that the sprays come on before 10:00 AM in the morning or at night, and your drips come on at whenever.
If your spray and your drip are on the same line.
They shouldn't be.
They shouldn't be.
And we can help break that.
Are you telling him how to irrigate?
We have a full staff that can help any customer with these issues.
So people in Phil Valley have drip and sprinklers on the same.
So, so Director Aguilar, could I offer a subs...
Over, under?
Can I offer a substitute motion or suggest a substitute motion or amendment to your motion? I'm not sure procedurally how to do that.
Actually, it wasn't a second.
It wasn't a second, so it failed for lack, so I would offer a substitute motion that we adopt these seven items with one change, that would be on shortage level 2.1 that outdoor water use is prohibited during the hours 10:00 AM until sunset with spray irrigation. So instead of daylight hours, it would be 10:00 AM until sunset.
So council can correct me if I'm wrong, but because this is the shortage level that's been dropped through an ordinance, I think you would have to make a separate, you could adopt 2.1 because that's been adopted through an ordinance.
All right. Well, then it'll 2.1.1.
Why don't you just leave 2.1 out for right now? Adopt the rest and then come, and then, and then we'll come back next meeting.
We could do that, but the, the reason, somebody's gonna have to do something, and we have these other six agencies, or five agencies, that maybe if we do this, they'll fall in line and do the same? I don't know.
Or the...
I'd say fall in cooperation.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Maybe there's another option here, so if you adopted 2.1 with the understanding that we didn't enforce it before 10:00 AM.
Well, I would, I don't like that. I don't want to adopt something that we were explicitly not enforcing. That doesn't make sense to me. I know what you're saying, but...
Yeah, we've, we've got a water conservation plan that includes all these different measures. The flexibility that you have today that you may not have in a month is to have something different than what's in your conservation plan, a nuance in terms of days or times of the day to water. So I think the conservation plan is flexible. If you wanted to go with the 10:00 AM to sunset, I'm just giving you an advanced preview that when we are required to go to phase to level two, having those different variations is not going to work, but we can try that for now.
Okay, so what you're saying is that we could approve a variation because it's not, we're not implementing the ordinance?
Because we're not going into phase two.
Right.
But we will have to at some point go into phase two, and it'll have to be more strict.
So if, before we go into phase two and before it's required, we could adjust our ordinance, reapprove our ordinance to allow for morning irrigation.
My legal opinion is that you have a conservation plan that has that flexibility built in, so you could today, if you wanted to, go to 10:00 AM to sunset. I'm just saying that once we go to level two, things become mandatory, but we're not going into level two today.
Right, and I think what Director Nelson's saying is before we mandatorily have to go to level two, we can change the ordinance such that...
That's correct, that's correct.
So that when we adopt it, it lines up with this?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And these shortage levels are actually, I mean, they're like a menu of options for each one, so you don't need to adopt all of them within each shortage level.
Okay, so is there a second to, to this motion?
All set.
All right, so that's the, that's everything, but the one change is 10:00 AM to, and so it's not level 2.1, it's some, it's some version, different version of level 2.1.
And your, your, your motion includes the suggestion to go from $2 to $3 per square foot on the turf.
Yes.
And, and just one final point, this was adopted by resolution 2021-20. So when, when we move to stage two, we're gonna have to come back with a resolution, and that resolution can include the issues we're talking about, about what penalties you want to do, whether those penalties are tied to budgets, and strict or more strict, whatever, in terms of water any times.
Motion in a second.
So there's a motion and a second, and we might consider, you know, I'm curious to hear how the CV Water Counts group might react to this. And if it's not completely negative, then maybe we'll need to modify our ordinance before we have to go to level two.
Resolution.
The resolution, yeah. All right, so there is a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion before we vote? In that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No. So, I just wanna double check that we're, what we're...
All right, all right, so we're, all right, we haven't heard your vote yet. Go ahead, more comment.
So, so we're going to attend to, is that correct?
10:00 to sunset.
10:00 to sunset.
Right.
And then we're going to approve all of these level 3.8, 3.1, all of them.
That's the motion.
In the staff recommendation, yes.
And we're taking the rebates from 2 to 3.
Right.
We could not change that at all.
Correct, that's in the staff recommendation.
Discussion, but it has not changed the recommendation.
The change is just to go to 3, yeah.
Okay, and you think that going to $3 is going to, is going to eat up a million dollars that we have left over in that program in the next four months?
I don't know that it will eat up that, that million dollars, but I think next year we would, you'd see an improvement in our, in our turf rebate program and the amount of turf converted. So it's, it's for this year, but also...
All of these things take time, right? I mean, it takes time to organize, it takes time to do all this stuff, so, I mean, we're not gonna, it's gonna be a whole year before you see any, or, or longer.
We're gonna be...
We may be under a mandate of 20%.
We're gonna be pushing, as soon as, if you increased it to $3, we're gonna be pushing that immediately.
And just to clarify, Jenna's memo in the board packet says the budget was $2 million, and we've spent 1.246. So there's less than $800,000 available.
$800,000 now.
But that's not what it says on this.
I'm looking at Jenna's recommendations.
Attachment number two.
Right.
And I'll add too, if on May 25th, the State Water Resource Control Board bans the irrigation of non, non, or non-functional turf on commercial institutional industrial properties that don't have trees or perennials attached to that sprinkler, I think we'll see a great participation increase to our program. And that $3 will help. I mean, hopefully, as Scott mentioned, get people ahead of the, before the state bans it.
You know, we had, just to, I mean, we had a number of discussions about medians and beltways and, you know, what was functional turf, what was not. I mean, I don't think we used those, the functional turf, but it was the median and the beltway was a big deal. And, you know, to be honest with you, the people who walk through those areas, I mean, usually, a lot of times, there's a sidewalk, people walks through there, and ask those people if the turf is functional versus non-functional, because when there's desert landscaping, it's much warmer in there. I mean, I cycle through these areas and, you know, some of the things really bother me about, you know, the two inches of water that's in the gutter, but by the same token, some of that grass, it's so cooling when you ride by, and, I mean, I don't know if that means it's functional or not, you know? It's, to me, it's functional, right? But, you know, those are the issues we're gonna be facing with this functional, non-functional use, and we should, you know, be prepared to, you know, engage in that conversation and look at kind of both sides of that coin.
Yeah, so we, we're still voting, I think. We have two in favor, one opposed, and I, I don't think I heard a vote from Director Bianco. You can abstain if you want, and I think it fails if he abstains, right?
No, if he, if he abstains, and I'll defer to council, the majority, which is two, so it passes.
Okay, is that right?
The rule of abstention is that if you abstain, that cannot defeat a motion, it goes with the majority of the votes that were taken. If the majority were in favor, then you have to...
So tell me why, why we, I should vote, why this is good to get ahead of this right now? I mean, tell, tell me you two who want this.
I, I think that...
I don't know if you want it, you're just...
I, I think it just shows some leadership. We, we need to deuce, I mean, obviously, we manage water differently in this valley than other places. I get that. But, but I think we also have a responsibility to, to recognize how difficult the hydrology in the state of California is, and, you know, we're not getting the kind of deliveries of our state water project water that we'd like to get. I mean, we're at 5% this year if we get that, right? So I think what we, what we can, it's, I think it's a small step for us to show some leadership in, in, in working with our customers to use less water.
I know, but it, it, it's hard for me to look people in the eye and tell them that you need to conserve water when there is, there is city councils approving these parks. I, I understand they've been, they've been, we've been talking about this for the last 10 years, and not one of them has gone in, but it, it just is, is, I mean, doesn't it, doesn't, isn't it...
I don't know, Anthony, I mean, if, if it were a golf course, would you feel differently? I mean, that's, that's the thing, I, I, I know, I mean, for the La Quinta project, look, we, we're, we take water management very seriously, right? I mean, that's been the, the real legacy of this district, is that we've brought in these imported supplies, and we've done what we can to use water wisely over, over the generations, right? Hundred, over 100 years. And when somebody says, you know, "Why are you telling me I can't run the water when I brush my teeth, and then you, and then you're allowing somebody to put in a wave park?" Well, it's not so much about the wave park, it's about managing water wisely, it's about not wasting water, right? And, and thank you to our customers for not wasting water. But this wise water management and use in importing water is why we're able to have a sustainable supply and a growing economy. I mean, our water management plans do allow for growth, that's part of the plan. And so when somebody says, "I wanna build a house" or, or, or put in a golf course, the, the plan has already, is already allowing that. It's, we have the ability to do these things, and, and this is sustainable into the future. You know, and, and I know we're gonna have cuts, right? I mean, there's gonna be cuts, but I, but I also believe that we'll, we'll still be able to do all these things, as long as people continue to use water wisely. I mean, conservation's a huge part of this, and not wasting water is a huge part of it. And, and, you know, I, I don't, I, I see a golf course as a beneficial use of water.
It's not just the wave park in La Quinta or the Disney project in Rancho Mirage, we have identified and are pursuing over $80 million worth of work in the East Valley to provide more affordable housing, over $30 million in sewer projects out there to allow for additional growth in the East Valley. And this is all still enabled by a prudent, wise water management plan that staff is actively pursuing. I mean, yes, the drought is here now, who knows how long it's gonna be sustained, but our projections moving forward allow us to support and find solutions for the municipalities that rely on us for those water services.
Good explanations, I think. I just wanted you guys to explain that.
I, I think too, from my perspective, is the 2012 to 2015 drought, Governor Brown came out with a mandated 35% cutback.
36 at first.
36%.
Then to 32.
And it just didn't seem to fit us at all because of the, I think, the leadership in, in stewing the water resources of the valley with the imported water supply, both from the Colorado River and the state water project, and so, and the groundwater and the reclaimed water that we're using, and so I, I felt that that was unfair, that 36%. We're not getting that mandated amount yet, but it could be 20%. And I feel that, that this, this board and this district, along with other districts in the valley, have really shown some leadership to steward the water appropriately. When I look at the development projects that are the wave park and the, and the Disney project that, you know, people are really complaining about, are probably people who mine their water at their own house very well and are good stewards themselves. And I think what these shortage level actions do is to try and target the, the people who are, are not minding their water, who have opportunities to save water and be more efficient and good stewards of the resource. And so for that reason, I feel like it's a worthwhile endeavor. It's not, I look at any of these and they're, they, they don't look to me to be... It's not, I look at any of these and they're, they, they don't look to me to be difficult to overcome. I understand the concerns about, you know, not being able to get around your irrigation sets in the level one, but I think it's doable. And, you know, I've done it, and I think I've talked to a lot of other people who have done it, and the increase from two to three dollars, I, I, you know, it's my hope that we generate some more enthusiasm for that. So, you know, good on the district on that. So I, I think it's a, it's, I look around the state and it's unprecedented times in terms of where the Colorado is right now. And i- if, if we're good managers, you know, great for us, but at the same time, you know, you look out in the future and you want to give some sort of cooperative and collaborative work to protect the system from crashing, and I think that's what the water managers on the Colorado River are, the approach they're taking is to, you know, collectively try and reduce the risk of even further degradation of lake levels at Lake Powell and Lake Mead. And so, you know, in that effort, I think you can't just sit back and say, "Oh, well, we're, we're not gonna do anything." And so, you know, I'm, I'm pleased that the district has shown some leadership in that regard as well. So that's why I'm in favor of it.
So I'll vote yes, I'd like to take out two point seven. I'm not, I'm not, that's so vague to me, I don't, I don't-
Two point seven. So there's a, a motion on-
All right, I, I'll, that's fine. I'll, I'll, I will offer an amended motion that removes two point seven.
So the substitute motion on the floor is to adopt the staff recommendations with the ten AM sunset and removing sec, level two point seven. But we need a second for that.
Need a second for that. And then we need, and then we need a revote.
I'll, I'll say.
We'll just can take that as a substitute motion first.
We need to revote, right?
Well, we haven't finished yet, so there's a mo, the voting wasn't completed.
Right.
And a substitute motion in the interim was made on the floor. So now we have a substitute motion, we take that first, and then we return to the other motion if it's, if the first one, if the substitute-
The substitute motion has a second.
So you would take a vote on that?
So now we're gonna vote on the substitute, all right? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, so that's three in favor, one opposed, one absent. So the substitute motion-
Prevails.
Prevails. And-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, thanks, Jenna.
Like making sausages, huh? It's something.
Yeah, no.
Other people do. How do you get back to the, this thing? There it is. Go to the next one. It's a little eyeball. So you're hitting the eyeball.
Yes.
Good, all right, this brings us to, I'm sorry, eight B. Dan, go ahead.
Good, good morning, President Powell, board members. You, we last saw this item back in February, February twenty-second, to request authorization to go out to bid. So we did receive bids for the drilling of nine monitoring wells and the rehab of eight existing wells, along with the drilling of three wells at warp two. So Fane Drilling was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. Their bid was in the amount of eight hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, along with additional expenditures for project management, inspection, and so forth. The total request of this project is nine hundred sixty thousand dollars. Again, this project is broken out into two parts, one for the salt and nutrient management plan portion, and the other to drill three monitoring wells at warp two, as I spoke about about a month and a half ago. I can get into more of the details if the board would like that. I know there was a lot of discussion last time. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just, Mr. Chairman, I'll just reiterate my concern about the overkill on the number of wells and the expense of this item, and because of that, I'm gonna be voting no if the motion gets on the floor.
So we're, are we, we're required, don't we have others in, in this plan? Are they paying also, the other agencies?
We, for our portion, we have a grant in the amount of two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. I know we're seeking funding for other wells, there are other wells that are not in our service area.
So other agencies are doing their own-
Yes.
Parts of it.
I believe there's a total of twenty-three wells. Our portion is fifteen of those.
I mean, you wanna put three monitoring wells along one eleven on warp, that's warp two, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
To replace the three existing wells.
So isn't this a reduction from what was originally required or we were obligated to do, from some number to nine?
So the total project is fifteen wells, this first phase is nine, but that fifteen could have been much higher. Environmental Services had negotiations in the past to get it down to fifteen.
Morning, Mr. Speaker.
Hi, Steve.
Good morning. So remember that what drove this is for our warp ten recycle water project. The, the order that we got was that we'd have to build a groundwater monitoring system for every reuse site that we serve from warp ten. We currently have eighteen and we plan twenty-four more. Could be up to three monitoring wells per site. So that would have been between forty-two and one hundred and twenty-seven new monitoring wells that we would have installed to continue to recycle our water from warp ten. We sued the Regional Water Control Board and the State Water Resources Control Board. And out of that suit, we got a settlement that allowed us to implement our salt and nutrient management plan monitoring wells, which we were already going to do, to replace all the monitoring wells we would have to do for recycling water. Because the salt nutrient management plan, monitoring plan, is a regional monitoring plan that looks at loading from all sources, including recycled water. So we were successful in our argument, these wells are needed to implement that. And so, yes, it's a considerable reduction. We, we estimated the cost at as high as one hundred and twenty-eight million dollars to install those monitoring wells, because we couldn't have selected the sites on our easements or our lands. We would have to put them exactly upstream and downstream and on recycled reuse sites. We would have to purchase land, easements, you know, it would have been a quite expensive process. So this is a very cost-effective way, it makes sense, it's a regional monitoring plan. And, you know, for the size of our valley, the number of wells we're monitoring as part of the salt nutrient management plan is really less than we've been monitoring in the past. So this is a reduction, this is a, a, a good approach, and, but there are some costs. And we've done a really good job getting grants to help us install these wells. The Coachella Valley Mountain Conservancies, they're, they gave us a two hundred and thirty-five thousand grant to help install the costs, so it is a reduction. Thank you.
And I think we have tried to use, to go and monitor private wells?
Yes.
To have permission?
We, we have filled the gaps with private wells where we can, yes.
And so, could we offer any incentives to, to, to people to, to allow us to do that, which in turn would save us money from drilling a new well?
So the key to the gaps are the shallow groundwater that we don't use beneficially in this valley.
So nobody has, nobody has a shallow, shallow ground-
Right, we don't have, so a lot of these wells-
Because it's, it's, the water's-
Salty.
It's salty.
It's naturally saline, so we don't really monitor, but the Regional Water Control Board wants us to monitor that shallow groundwater. So we don't have wells, so we're going out there to install these wells to check the box so that we get an approved salt nutrient management plan, monitoring plan. Yeah, so, yeah, there's not a lot. We have a few that we've installed and we're utilizing those. And at our, you know, warp two, those wells, those are a requirement of our permit to discharge wastewater. Those are not, we don't have a choice, we have to put those in. And, and some of those are shallow, and we're using those as part of our salt nutrient management plan.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Steve, that's good explanation.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion to approve item eight B.
Okay, I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, so that's three in favor, one opposed, and then the item passes. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Zoe, I saw you on the, the on-deck position there.
Yeah, I appreciate it. C, I, what's his name?
Elmer.
Elmer, yeah, Elmer, good morning.
Yes, good morning, good morning, President Powell, board members of the board directors, Elmer Alex, the Assistant Director of Engineering Services and Planning. This item authorizes the general manager to execute a First Amendment to the Special and Standard Domestic Water Installation Agreement and a termination agreement with Brittany West LLC. The project proponent has decided to abandon this project. A letter is included in the agenda packet for your reference, and I'm available if you have any questions.
So the, the next item is very similar to this, but-
Correct.
So these two parcel, this Brittany West is getting out, and then the one next to them is getting in, right? Is that-
Correct, yes, they are taking over the installation of the water main.
So that water main is, it's the same water main, it's just gonna be funded by the other, by the neighbor instead of by these-
Correct, sir.
Okay, yeah. Interesting. Will, will, will Brittany be able to tap into that later if they want to?
If they want to, yes.
So they'll just have to start the process over, but then, at that point, the line will already be there?
The line will be there, yes.
Assuming the other one gets, goes forward?
Yes.
Okay. Is that just a timing issue, they weren't ready to proceed, or something else I'm missing here?
This property owner decided not to develop those two lots, and if you can see it, the picture on the next item, the property owner to the south has already started construction of their house.
Right. Interesting. All right. Is, is there a motion to approve eight C?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed four oh. All right, then let's do D, the neighbor.
And this item authorizes the general manager to execute a special domestic water installation agreement with Thomas Hazel Baker and Lynn Hazel Baker. And I'm available if you have any other questions.
Right.
I'll, I'll move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Right, any other discussion, or any discussion? We've already covered a little bit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passed four oh.
Thanks, Elmer.
D, on to E.
Now we're cooking.
Southern California Edison Water Warp Ten Added Facilities Agreement for T-one Pump Station Replacement. Hey, Aranda.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, audience, and fellow staff. This item is authorized general manager to execute an added facilities agreement with Southern California Edison for the warp ten T-one pump station replacement. This agreement is a very standard agreement of, for the SC's own facilities that are needed to enable Southern California Edison to provide electrical service to the pump station. I'm available here to take any questions you, you may have on this very standard agreement.
Will, will this pump station be used for recharge and channel?
This pump station, it's needed so that we can continue our expansion of non-potable water connection projects. The ones that we're currently doing on Hovley, which is Bermuda Dunes, Woodhaven, Oasis, but then it also will give us ability to expand then to the west so that we can connect those customers along Franciscan Nutra, but then also go north to allow us to connect customers along Varner. So this is a much-needed facility for our non-potable water customers.
Including us for the channel?
For, I'm sorry, didn't you-
For the channel.
For the channel? Uh, no, actually, this facility is not associated with the Palm Desert Repelenture Facility. That facility is strictly, and now, and it's gonna be a, an extension of the Midvalley Pipeline.
Yeah, so again, this is for the treated wastewater effluent, and we are going to be restricted from putting any treated wastewater into the channel. That's only gonna be straight Colorado River water.
Okay. Yep, yep, yep. So it gives us quite a bit of capacity as we expand, as we expand our non-potable system and add those, all those other customers?
Correct.
All right, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay. I, I think we're all moving a little slowly because we're all trying to catch up on the, now that I, now that I know how to, now that I know how to open the items, I can, I'm reading them as we go along. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any, any opposed? All right, that passed four oh. Thanks, Aranda.
It's important to use the eyeball, not the download.
Yep, that's the key. That's, I didn't even know you could click on the item itself and it opens up, I didn't have, I never found that.
As long as you leave the meeting tab open, it's, you can get back to the agenda.
Yeah, it's an eyeball.
It's an eyeball, not the download.
Not a three little dot.
Very weird, yeah. All right, F, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
That's better. Go ahead.
We're requesting certification for the mitigated native declaration for the East Coachella Valley, Valley View Mobile Home Park Consultation Project, part of the Phase Three A two transmission main, domestic water supply project. This is a subsequent MND, and we're requesting certification on, we have an optional presentation for you. Essentially, this, this MND is a subsequent MND, which means we made some minor changes to our analysis from the MND that was approved in two thousand nineteen. And that was a result of grant funding application requirement from the state. We also have a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan that's been updated for this project. Specifically, there was a section of the pipeline that would cross the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel that wasn't fully analyzed in the previous document, and the state determined that that was a portion of the project that did require a subsequent MND, which, so we have gone through the procedural documentation to document that section of the pipeline, and we're looking to complete the SEQA process and move forward with a grant funding application for the project to serve these mobile home parks in, in the East Valley. With that, I'll go ahead and trust that you reviewed the materials and I can go to the optional presentation if requested.
You're a very trusting individual.
Yeah, this is one of the ones I couldn't open.
I can keep going, just to give you a little more information. There's, we also had a couple comment letters during our public comment period, we had to go out to, you know, public review, so standard SEQA process. We received two comment letters, one was from the City of Coachella, they wanted the recognition of this being in their service area and their intent to, to serve this area and, and rely on the SEQA document in the future if possible. The other, the comment letter we received- Uh, the other, the comment letter we received was from the state. The state also, um, commented on the environmental document in regards to water supply to serve the area and was interested if there were going to be any new wells added to serve this area, which there was not. It's not part of the project, we made that clear. And, um, you know, they're just interested in making sure we also submit all of the, um, final materials, uh, at the end of this process. We would request authorization to file a notice of determination with the Riverside County Clerk in the State Clearing House to provide those, uh, approvals and, uh, documentation back to the state for this project.
William, maybe this is a question for Sylvia. I don't see that presentation in the board packet. Was that, uh, provided?
Attachment. I'm going through
Maybe we could just kind of clip, flip through the slides there. Oh, no, it is. I got it now.
This one.
Okay.
It's subsequent M D. Yeah, it's attachment one, two, three.
Yes.
Didn't get all the way down the list or I skipped that one.
So here in the, in the figure that I'm showing, you can see the nine mobile home parks that'll be connected as part of this project. And they're all on small water systems, meaning they're, they're on their own wells and, and, uh, this would be an improvement uh, in the water quality and reliability of service to those communities. Um, this is part of a, you know, broader effort for CBWD to serve these communities and disadvantaged communities in the East Valley. Um, and provides a long-term solution.
William, can you go back?
Sure.
To the, uh, one, yeah, to that one. Uh, which mobile home parks or small water systems are in CBWD's service area and which ones are in Coachella's service area? You made, you had made the comment that
I believe, I believe.
Coachella made a comment about, uh, that they wanted to reserve, right?
Anything in Coachella?
I believe they all overlap.
To answer that question, everything north of Airport Boulevard would be in the City of Coachella's, uh, sphere of influence. We have a, in agreement with the City of Coachella regarding that. So everything south of Airport Boulevard is CBWD.
Okay.
So it'd be Soto and De León would be the two.
Yeah, and so those are our lines. So we have the service agreement with Coachella on those two, um, small water systems.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
If you look at this figure, this is actually the section of the pipeline that was specific to this subsequent MND. And you can see there's some, um, options for where this, uh, section of pipeline will run. And it's approximately thirty-five hundred feet in length. And there'll be some drilling, directional drilling underneath the stormwater channel and the railroad tracks there to install this line. Again, Sequa is a disclosure of their environmental impacts and that's what we're requesting, uh, that the board approve today and to go on the record with what we've identified. And do that in a public forum.
Okay.
Here you can see the topics that we've analyzed, all the required, um, topics under Sequa. It was a part of Appendix G in Sequa and consistent with our local Sequo guidelines. The highlighted resource topics in yellow are the ones that we've identified mitigation measures are required to reduce those impacts to less than significant. And this, this also requires, due to grant funding guidelines, federal crosscutters known as Sequa Plus. And that is because the state uses federal funding and that triggers a, uh, a federal, uh, analysis. And essentially what we've done is identified mitigation measures to reduce all these impacts to less than significant and that just means we're proceeding responsibly during construction. We had mitigation measures, uh, that were very similar to what was in the 2019, uh, MND. Um, we did have, um, a couple additional mitigation measures that were identified in, in this document. Uh, we need a frac out plan for directional drilling in the stormwater channel to, to reduce the, uh, any, um, pollution impacts to the channel. Uh, we also identified light abatement because of the sensitivity that could be happening, uh, for resources, uh, animals and, um, uh, species that inhabit the stormwater channel. And we also have a mitigation site that we established in the CBSC fifty-four to thermal project that we need to make sure we stay in compliance with. Here you can kind of see a diagram of how the directional drill, um, is anticipated, um, yeah, under the stormwater channel. And that's done with, you know, uh, a drill, a consultant who operates a, a drill rig and, um, because you're underneath the channel, even though you're not on the surface, it's considered within the vertical jurisdiction of some of the permitting agencies. So you're still required to go receive those permits and was why, uh, really what triggered, uh, the requirement for this environmental document.
So that boat that's, uh, on the
I was gonna say the same thing.
Sorry. I just, I mean, they're obviously not gonna do it while the channel's full.
That's one's the North Lake project.
Sometimes there, I, from what I understand, sometimes there is a person on the surface that helps guide, uh, the drill bit uh, by getting some feedback on the service. In this case, it would be, uh, uh, you know, a person, probably in waiters.
That guy in the boat?
Do we, do we, do we have other places, you may not know this, do we have other places in the valley where we've gone underneath the channel?
Yeah. Uh, other than the stormwater channel?
Uh, under the stormwater channel?
Under the stormwater channel.
Have we done this before?
Yes.
Yeah, we've got
Avenue fifty-four to thermal, right near the Highway one eleven, uh,
What about the, what about the west valley? Have we done that?
Yeah, we've got a sewer pipe under Jefferson, right, right by Jefferson.
So, so, I mean, the obvious question that somebody like me might ask, I mean, you have the, the Avenue fifty-six bridge. Well, now that just, that doesn't go, that goes over the channel, right? Goes over the railroad tracks. And the channel, I might remembering this right.
I don't know.
Uh, my question was gonna be, why not just run it on the bridge instead?
Oh, yeah. They looked at that in 2019. Uh, wasn't, it was investigated and determined not to be an option.
Why do we have to go underneath it? Why do we have to go underneath it?
The other option's open, open trench, which is very disturbing. This is, this, um, eliminates the impacts.
This is for water.
Potable
Potable water.
Yeah.
Why aren't we, why aren't we drilling a well on the other side of the freeway? And so we don't have to do that?
We're just trying to connect, connect using our, our, our system that's already in place.
Right, we already have, it's to connect the two, um, pressure zones. We already have a pipeline on one side of the channel, on the, um, east side of the channel, and we already have a pipeline on the west side. So this will connect
Tie it together.
And tie the two, um, systems together. So it provides redundancy, it provides reliability.
An additional capacity.
It, yeah.
And you'd probably have better water quality on the west side.
Water quality because on the east side, we have wells in Mecca and they have to be treated for arsenic.
Yeah.
So, and the wells that are in Mecca are in a different pressure zone than this will be. This is the, the thermal area, so it, it's, 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 it's the most reasonable way to provide service to this area is to just put that, the pipe underneath.
It's gonna allow the expansion of that Mecca side domestic system.
And, and we've done this down on Avenue sixty to, um, to provide a, um, a redundancy for the Mecca system. There's a, I believe it's a twenty-four inch pipe that we, we jack and board under the channel on Avenue sixty.
And that ties in about where the ion exchange treatment
It ties in exactly there, so we have the ability to transfer water between the two pressure zones.
I'm just, just asking a question.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm
Yeah, good, good questions.
No, I appreciate you asking it, I'm just
To, to pump the water underneath and then uphill and all these, all these, all these
Yeah, it'll, it'll help, it'll help that other side quite a bit.
There's reasons, okay.
So when you're done with this, can you go up to the delta and put a little
That's a bigger, that's not a thirty inch pipe though. That's a much bigger pipe.
They are working on that environmental document.
All right, so, uh, we're looking for a motion to approve this item F.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you gentlemen.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That, passed four oh.
Thanks William.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, good stuff. So finance, we have this, uh, mid-year operating budget amendment. Carrie, it looks like a lot of things are positive variances, right?
Yes, good morning.
Yeah.
So, um, so this is, uh, related to, um, our fiscal year twenty twenty-two mid-year budget amendment. Uh, although we do look at it consistently every month and every year, uh, this is the first time I think we're bringing back a mid-year, uh, adjustment for operating and we're gonna uh, continue to do that going forward in all the future years as well. Um, so just to kind of clarify, um, the action is really just, uh, we are required to have a board action if there's any increases in any of the expenditures as on a total, as a total fund. Um, any adjustments in projections in terms of revenue or a decrease in expense does not really require a board action. Um, so I wanted to also acknowledge, um, all of the staff across the departments because this mid-year adjustments is in collaboration with them. We review, they review their numbers and then their projections for the rest of the count, the fiscal year, so we were able to do some adjustments on the expenses. Um, as stated on the BAI, uh, we do have a presentation ready. I wasn't sure if you wanted us to go through, I just wanna ask specific questions.
Are we gonna, what about the capital budget? Is there a process to do an amendment there also or, or is that too hard to predict or?
So actually that was presented, uh, by a study session by Carrie on, um, March twenty-ninth.
Right.
And since that was a decrease of, um, a CIP budget, so there's really no, um, uh, board action required for that one.
Okay, so, but when you, when we create our budget for next year,
Yes.
You, you're able to take into account those ending balances?
Correct. That's why part of this is we're also adjusting some of the revenue projections so that we go in on fiscal twenty twenty-three with a better balance, carryover balance of what the reserve balance would be projected and how we're gonna be spending that as well.
Okay. All right, yeah, um, do you, do y'all wanna see the presentation on this?
Yeah.
I guess, I think I saw this.
So this, this is, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just not prepared this morning, uh, with the agenda deal, but, um, so this is an amendment to like the Q quarter three budget as we're heading into
No, it's for, for the total budget actually. So I can kind of go through the slides quickly if you would like.
If you could hit the highlights, I think that would be good.
Um, so this is the change highlights. So again, uh, this first page, this first slide right here shows the operating, operating revenue. We made some adjustment on projections. For example, water sales, we did increase it based on how the trending, where the consumption report are. Um, so the property tax, same thing. When we did initially, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So are these changes like at the end of the quarter or forecasting to the end of the year, what, what the end of the year? And this is, is this a process that you do, what, at quarter one, quarter two, quarter three?
Yes, yes, we do that every quarter. We do review it, but we have never really formally brought it back to the board as to how it's gonna affecting your, um, budget projections up to the end of the fiscal year. So this is something a new process that we're kind of formalizing to let you know where
So I could describe this as a, uh, a Q three, uh, uh, end of year adjustment, right?
Well, it's projected all the way throughout. I'm sorry, maybe I'm not understanding your question. Out of, throughout the end of the fiscal year is what we're projecting, yes.
So you're, you're truing up your budget to actual
Right.
So we're adjusting the, what we thought we were gonna, how we're gonna end in fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And as, as Carrie said, uh, a great deal of the numbers that are being presented here are on the revenue side. The, the board doesn't approve revenues per se as part of the budget process. You're approving appropriations for expenditure. Uh, so some of our recommendations do include an increase or decrease in those appropriations.
Okay.
But without the revenue picture also being presented at the same time, it just wouldn't make sense.
No, that's very helpful, thanks.
Why did the, I'm trying to look, why did electricity go up so much?
Yeah, so, um, that's based on how it's trending currently and last year as well. Um, so we have an increase, the rate has increased about fifteen percent, uh, with SCE. And so we are estimating that it's gonna be, it's gonna end at a higher number than what we originally anticipated. And we're also actually, um, getting a better picture of the electricity, um, in collaboration with operations. Um, next years, they're gonna be taking over and kind of looking at the usage as well, um, the kilowatts. It's not all about the rates that have been increased. It's also dependent on what the, what the, um, estimated usage would be for each of the meters or each of the plants. So, um, operations is gonna be, uh, with Dan's help, um, they're gonna be helping us go through, uh, and get a better picture of electric, electricity budget in the future.
And also say, is, if you think about, you know, where we are in the process, uh, a week from today, we're gonna be presenting the operating budget. Our projections are based upon best information we have at this point, not only for the remainder of this year, but for all of next year. And I'd just say on electricity budget, we didn't have as good of a projection as we could have. That's why, uh, Dan Charlton and his team are gonna be helping us in the future. Clearly, we were under on our, uh, project, projected budget for fiscal twenty-two a year ago when we presented that budget.
Is, is there like a rule of thumb as to, uh, electricity versus water sales? Like in this instance, uh, electricity is going up one point eight million to water sales six point seven increase, so that's twenties, about twenty-seven percent. Is there like a rule of thumb of how much electricity it takes for, per dollar of water sale?
Um, I
That's probably an engineering question.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to answer the electricity, uh, part of it, but what we looked at when you looked with it, when we originally looked at electricity budget, what we're looking at is again, the, uh, the usage of it and then the rates that's, that's, uh, that's been provided to us by SCE. They tell us it's gonna be about a ten to twelve percent increase and we incorporate that into the budget. We looked at historical. Uh, again, it, it's kind of like a hit and miss so far. That's why we have asked operations to help us along as they might have a better picture of, we don't know like what plant might be shut down for a while for repairs or, and meters or, this is all dependent on the usage, kilowatt usage as well. So that would really significantly help us, um, in the future predict a better number in terms of electricity, uh, budget. So, um, for, to part of this, we're again, so really the action item is even though the net, uh, change is an income, um, for all the funds, you're still gonna be changes on all, on all funds related to the, to the increase. So that's the board action that needs to happen is we're appropriating more expenditures on each of the funds reflected on, uh, based on electricity, the contract services and the increase in replenishment expenses. So there's a net effect on each of the funds as well. I can go through the slides, um, if you would like to by fund. So for example, um, if we go to the domestic water fund, which is showing on the screen right now, um, even though the net, uh, change is an, uh, increase in operating income of about three point five, what you're approving is that increase in expenditure to appropriate more expenses by two point one million dollars. And that's how it's gonna be for each of the fund as well.
So our original budget, I'm just on slide five, I guess. Our original budget showed a, a cash flow decrease of thirty-one million and now we're showing an increase of nine. So, so the delta is, is a positive or favorable forty million dollars on cash.
In cash. And that's broken down, um, on that little bullet, um, item at the bottom of the slide. So if you look at it, majority of that, uh, forty point one million change is related to the decrease in the CIP of twenty-six point four and then, uh, net operating increase of fourteen point seven because we did increase the revenues. And then, uh, what has been approved And then what has been approved, so if you look at the columns, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to slide four. So if you look at the column, we have the fiscal year 2022 original budget. That's what you approved last year. That's what's posted on the budget document. And throughout the year from July to February, you've had some board actions that comes in. So we've kind of updated that. That's what's showing us a current budget. And then the one that's highlighted in yellow, that's what the projected fiscal year '22 budget, and then it shows the change.
So before you would give us these updates, right? And they would just be updates, but what's different now is that you're actually changing everything.
We're, because we're appropriating more expenditures because the.
We've never done this before.
We've never done this before. We're providing you guys updates and it's gonna go forward.
At the end, so you're gonna change midstream.
Yes.
What are we accomplishing by doing that?
It just kind of gives us a better picture of where we're gonna start for when we're doing the next fiscal year's budget. It gives us a better projection of where we're going to be starting out.
Is it gonna prevent us from doing budget amendments between now and the end of the fiscal year?
No, no, of course not. No, it does not. This is just like the mid change.
So is this approval, is this a, like a spreading out of all the budget amendments to authorize the expenditures of increases of on higher, higher costs? In other words, the budget is X and this is going to be X plus? So are we now approving the X plus right now?
Yes, the X plus right now, the additional that we're estimating where it's gonna end up.
So if we didn't approve it, then you couldn't pay the electricity bill?
If it's going to go.
We would.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, it's not authorized.
We're not gonna not pay the electricity bill.
No, no, I get it, but, but you wouldn't have authorization to pay.
We wouldn't, that is correct.
We need to appropriate more funds, more expenses on the fund. That's it.
Carrie, I have a question. On your summary sheet, you're showing a decrease of almost $2 million in the investment income.
Yes.
But I seem to recall from the Finance Committee meetings that we're, for the most part, exceeding our benchmarks. So can you explain the decrease?
Yes, so while we're still, while we're still beating the benchmark itself, the, the composition of our investment because of what the Federal Reserve has done in decreasing the rates, that has had a long-term effect on, so we kind of invested on lower investment.
Lower yields, I see.
So in the end, when you compare it to last year, the investment income is coming in a lot lower than what we have originally estimated because there were, invested at a higher portfolio.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And there's a lag as, as, as investments mature. The replacement of those, the availability of replacements.
The time.
At the same rates just aren't there, so it's a lag effect. You may still see a fairly strong investment return as we did last year. But moving forward, there just isn't enough stock available to provide equivalent.
Thank you.
Measures. Coming back to President Powell's point I wanted to mention, you think about where we were last year when we presented the actuals for the, the whole year. And it takes a while before we finish the year and close the book. So when we come back in the fall and give a review of how we did on the previous fiscal year, that's, you know, ship has sailed. So we're trying to give you better information six months ahead of time so that you can see where we're going and understand that to the extent appropriate, we're baking in the information that we have and what's happening this year with the budget for next year, the rate studies, et cetera. Knowing that sometimes there's increases and decreases of a one-time nature. Sometimes it's just a timing effect as most of the CIP is. And some of the things are endemic changes that are not only for the year we're in, but they will have a carryover effect in future years. We're taking into all of those aspects into consideration in our budgeting process.
Right.
So this might be a question for Jim. Why are salaries and benefits increasing as much as they are? It's, you know, isn't the budget process to budget for all the M&amp;Ms or, or is there a different methodology now for that?
I, I don't recall what percent COLA was included in the budget, but we have to go by the COLAs approved by the MOUs, the Memos of Understanding. Yeah, it does look at, it does not exceed the authorized full-time employees. But we also have not taken what would be called a labor discount vacancy. We typically have about 20 positions that are vacant at any given time. We don't deduct that from the annual payroll to speak of. So we use that to cover overtime, you know, some consulting if we need to. I mean, it's just money that's there, but I, I don't know what was included in the budget to begin with, whether it was 3% or 5%.
Okay. May I clarify? So we're technically not increasing the total labor budget. So what's happening is we're moving it from capital budget to operating budget. Since we are decreasing the, the capital budget that includes the labor, it just moves to operating. So technically, the net change is not an increase.
So where we would, where we would allocate human resources to the capital budget, since those projects aren't happening, we're bringing them back into the.
Operating, so that's just an appropriation. So it's not, there's no change.
Better explanation than the one I had.
Yeah. Good job. Alright.
Additional questions?
No. Yeah, I appreciate that. It just gives us more clarity of where we are. I like it.
So I'd move approval of the proposed fiscal year 2022 mid-year operating budget. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed 4-0. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Back to operations. Morning, Dan.
Good morning.
Good.
I'd just like to introduce Angel Herrera. He's our new electric shop supervisor.
Angel.
So he manages the electric shop, HVAC and pump maintenance for distribution, domestic and irrigation. So he's about 25 employees. He's been here about five months. And he's here for my technical support should you get into the minute details of what we're trying to accomplish. But hopefully I'll keep this global and quick for you. It's recommended that the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to execute a construction contract with Exaro Technologies in the amount of $1,821,771 for corrosion protection system improvements, which was specification number 20, 2022-6. It's also recommended that the Board authorize a contingency in the amount of $196,229 for a total requested authorization of $2,018,000. The project involves a replacement of corrosion protection facilities to safeguard portions of CVWD's existing infrastructure. We have several facilities that are made of steel, so replacing the cathodic protection that is not working properly, whether that be sacrificial or impressed current, will extend the useful life of the asset and ultimately lower future costs to the customer. On August 13th of 19, we approved a professional services agreement with VNA Consulting in the amount of $366,241. And that was to perform testing, inspection and make recommendations for repair for our, most of our steel infrastructure. And some of the key projects, just to highlight, we have a large sheet piling project on the Stormwater Channel just upstream of Avenue 50. So the sheet piling axis is our cutoff wall and it hasn't been adequately protected cathodically. So we're going to install a system to, to protect that asset, basically the sheet piling, to extend the life of the asset. It's about 25 years old now. We'd like to get another 25 years out of that sheet pile. Pardon me?
It's just above ground things, right?
No, the sheet piling goes down 40 feet below grade, just upstream of Avenue 50. It's the only place I know that we actually have sheet piling in that axis cutoff walls.
They're gonna dig down.
Oh, the work that they're doing now, they're putting in, in a press current system. So they will drill four small wells and they'll put down magnesium rods and then they'll have a power supply. And they'll basically move electrons around to be able to reduce the length of time that it takes to corrode, meaning or extend the corrosion rate on a negative aspect. So basically, you're saying I have a piece of steel and I am changing the electric charge of that through a power supply and it actually extends useful life of the, of the facility.
Are they gonna guarantee it?
Nothing is guaranteed, but I can tell you if that, it will definitely extend the life of the asset without question. It will corrode slower and if we don't do this, we're gonna be digging up three miles on tribal land in the Stormwater Channel and building, putting in dewatering wells and then putting in concrete that's gonna be multi-millions of dollars. So even if we can extend it five years beyond its existing useful life by protecting it from corrosion, it's worth its weight in gold.
Forever.
Yeah, technology's been around for a long time and the, technology's been around for a long time. And the process that we're gonna have in place with the anodes in there, the anode should last for about 35 years. So it's gonna protect the corrosion for about 35 years. So other water districts have been doing this? Yes, this is used on, on other water departments, Navy ships, gas lines. Okay, so we're not, this isn't something that we're.
Director Bianco, your mic, please. Thank you.
We're not the first to go and do this.
No, sir.
Here, okay.
For, another major facility is the Mid Valley Pipeline. We're extending, spending millions of dollars past the Mid Valley Pipeline for the public connections and we're going further west. The Mid Valley Pipeline is a 54-inch steel pipeline that doesn't have cathodic, adequate cathodic protection. So the fact that we're gonna spend half of these funds on the Mid Valley Pipeline to make sure that the steel lasts longer, which is our backbone of our entire non-pubal water expansion system, is gonna, you know, again, extend the life and make the pipeline last longer and it's gonna save us a lot of money in the long run. So we advertised for bids on February 1st. We received bids on March 2nd. Three bids were received, opened and read publicly and Exaro was selected as the lowest responsible bidder. We've included the project in the amount of $318,000 in this fiscal year, so we're hoping to hit the ground running. And then we've put 1.7 million into the fiscal year '23 operating budget. We did follow the notice of exemption guidelines. We've filed a notice of exemption at Riverside and Imperial Counties because some of the facilities to be protected are in Imperial County too. Primarily Bombay Beach Pipeline, for example. We have a 22-mile pipeline serving all the way down to Bombay Beach. It's 55 years old. It's steel with asphalt mastic coating on it and it has discontinuity. So the fact that we can put in this corrosion protection and make it last longer is, is huge for us rather than replacing it in a shorter timeframe.
Do they use that for well casings? Why don't, why don't they, why don't they do that when you have a well that goes down 300 feet?
Well, you, you can use it for any type of steel if, if that is the case. I'm not sure if they use it for well casings per se, no. But we've looked, we've explored more, more stronger steels in recent well drillings, I know that. But we use it for a lot of different things. It's just, it's very, you know, you have to be very cautious and you have to be very prudent on the maintenance of it as well. And that's what we're intending on doing and I think it's the cheapest way to extend the life of the asset. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Hopefully some people are around later to see if this actually works.
I mean, we, we, these facilities, some of them had cathodic in place. They just weren't done adequately. And if after 55 years, you, if you don't have that current going all the way down, you can have discontinuities and that discontinuity can break the line of the electron transfer and it, it just becomes non-productive at that point, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this H?
I'll move. Second.
Thank you. Alright, so there's a motion, a second. Thanks. Angel, nice to see you here. And Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed 4-0.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
There was one written, don't click that, one written communication that was addressed by staff. Thank you for that. 9B. We have this proposed Colorado River Water Conservation Program. Robert, floor is yours.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. I have a brief presentation to kind of give the board an update on where we are on the Colorado River system and the motivation for why this board may want to consider, you know, instructing staff to proceed with the, at least take a look at the Colorado River Water Conservation Program. So I'm gonna, in this brief presentation, I'll go through and cover the need, which includes some pretty grim hydraulic forecast, or hydrologic forecast, I should say. Some of the history for this, this agency in terms of conservation program, some of the details and then some proposed schedules. And the board will have a chance to, to approve some of these elements later on. But you know, right now it's just for discussion or just for an update. So CVWD has been participating very actively on a river for decades. And this graphic is the way that Reclamation presents their 24-month study. And then they do companion graphs for both Lake Mead and Lake Powell. So for some of those who may not be as familiar with this graph, I'll just walk you through this very quickly. I think it summarizes the, the story on the, on a river pretty succinctly. So Reclamation predicts through some modeling efforts of what the, you know, both Lake Powell and Lake Mead looks like. And so the elevations are given on the vertical axis and the, the time scale is on the, on X-axis. As we kind of go forward, there's three lines that you'll note here. The line at the very top that's dashed is the most probable. The line in the middle, which is green, is most probable, most probable. And the, the red line is minimum probable. So these are based on, I think it's like 10th percentile, 50th percentile and then like 90th percentile respectively. And it's worth noting that the dash lines are estimates or predictions and the solid lines have already occurred. So in terms of Lake, Lake Mead, why it's important is because the shortage triggers or tiers are made on the first of the year, first year of the calendar. So I think what we're looking at is, you know, January 1st of 2022, January 1st, 2023 and 24 for this graphic. And just to kind of, you know, make sure that we're talking from, from same set of facts. Elevation trigger 1075 is the first shortage trigger for shortages on the river and we entered that this year. And Arizona and Nevada takes the first shortages. 1050 is the next tier of shortages, which is tier two, and then tier three would be 1025. Superimposed on top of this is 1045, which was a condition that was set under the drought contingency plan, which this agency and others signed into effect in 2019. And why 1045 is important is because California actually makes contributions at 1045 and the little contribution table is provided on the left-hand side in that little table. So California's first contributions start at 1045 and then continues to increase as the elevations go down by five feet. CVWD's contributions are 7%, of California's contributions are listed in this table, going from 14,000 to 25,500. And again, these are conditions that this board adopted and signed into effect as part of our contribution back in 2019 as part of DCP. So in entirety, the DCP was actually. So in entirety, the DCP was actually, um, set forward to prevent Lake Mead from, um, crashing down to unrecoverable levels. So I think that would be considered, you know, anything say less than ten thirty. I know ten twenty has always been the number that's used, but ten thirty, um, has been used as the reconsultation trigger, uh, between the states. So if we kind of take a look at these color, uh, lines as we kind of roll forward, um, you can see that we're solidly, uh, below ten seventy-five. So, uh, there's no way the system is going to recover in the next two years, uh, to where we get above a, a shortage conditions. And it's very likely that we will, uh, go below ten, ten fifty. The question is, how fast do we do that? And which one of these lines, uh, you know, do we believe? So, uh, the two, uh, points that are of particular importance, uh, to us are what I've circled in red, that's occurring in January of twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. So if we look at ten, uh, at January twenty-twenty-three, you know, it looks like we're kind of hovering around the ten fifty stage. So it doesn't look like California is going to be, uh, called on to make our DCP contributions, and these are predicated on releases, uh, from Lake Powell of between seven point oh, uh, seven millimeter feet up to seven point five four. Most likely, uh, it'll be seven point four eight, but there's been talks about, uh, even limiting, you know, the release down to seven point oh, uh, which I, you know, I don't need to get into a lot of details right now. So if we kind of go march forward to, uh, twenty-twenty-four, then, uh, that line looks even worse. Um, I think there's, I think the only, uh, data point, I would say, in that prediction that does not, uh, make, uh, California make a contribution is the maximum probable, which is ninetieth percentile. So the, uh, most probable, which is fiftieth, and the minimum, which is, um, uh, the tenth percentile, uh, has us making contributions in twenty-twenty-four. So this was the landscape that we were all operating under when the five hundred thousand acre, uh, five hundred thousand plus plan, uh, was, you know, put into effect, uh, in December, uh, twenty-twenty-one. CVWD was not a participant, you know, to that, um, to that signing ceremony, but, uh, we were, we are very aware of it, and we have been participating in discussions. So in essence, what the five hundred plus plan, uh, does is an overlay on top of the DCP. And, um, between a combined funding efforts between, uh, Arizona, uh, Nevada, and California, uh, and also the federal government, there's a combined two hundred million dollars for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three to come up with a hundred, uh, I'm sorry, a million acre feet of additional conserved water. So that effort is underway, uh, and so for, in the context of discussion, uh, that's the pot of funding that I think we will be drawing from for this conservation effort. So we'll park aside the discussion for Lake Mead for a minute and move on to Lake Powell. And I'm kind of doing this in reverse order, because, uh, our efforts have been focused on Lake Mead previously, but I would say in the last two months or so, uh, there's been more attention and more, um, discussions on Lake Powell. Um, and so this present, the presentation on Lake Powell data, uh, is the same way, but the elevations are different. And so for Lake Powell, the, uh, critical points, uh, on this graph, I'd like for the board to kind of maybe focus in on, is elevation thirty-five twenty-five and elevation thirty-four ninety, which is, uh, outlined in red. So the red is the minimum power pool, uh, so below with this, there is no power production. And this doesn't just affect a few states, this, this affects literally the entire Western U.S. Uh, that, the power from Hoover, um, I think Metropolitan gets a lot of benefits from, and a lot of Southern California agencies do too. So I think there's real concern about the power pool being reached. And you will see that thirty-five twenty-five was set as an upper limit trigger for discussions, um, you know, before we get down to thirty-four ninety. And, uh, I've circled in red, uh, the point in time, so early March, um, Lake Powell actually went below thirty-five twenty-five, and I think is still below thirty-five twenty-five, um, as we speak. So there's some real concerns about, uh, what that hydrology looks like. Um, and the, you know, hydrology and the, um, inflows have just been really dismal. So you can see that, kind of looking forward, you know, thirty-four ninety, uh, could be potentially reached, um, in the next few years. So that's why there's, there's real concern now about not just protecting Mead, but also protecting Lake Powell. And, uh, there's some active discussions right now about, you know, some, what else the Upper Basin of it, uh, states are going to be doing, as well as Lower Basin, eliminating releases. So that's the backdrop, and I'm sorry that the news isn't any better, but, uh, that sets up, you know, the stage for the discussion on why a conservation effort is needed. So for this district, um, you know, going back last couple of decades, um, I think the last major effort of a conservation effort was done in the mid-two thousands as part of the qualification settlement agreement, and this was a program called Water Twenty-Twenty-Five. Um, and this was conducted in response to a two thousand and five reclamation program, and, you know, we identified methods for water savings and so on, and, you know, we did some irrigation scheduling changes. You know, fast forward about ten years later, um, this body engaged on reclamation pilot program in twenty-fifteen, and this was a flood-to-drip program that was funded by four, uh, four basin states. And, uh, we requested a million dollars to convert up to six hundred and sixty-seven, uh, acres, uh, of, um, date, uh, date irrigation. So this, I was, would not call it to be a particularly successful effort, uh, we resulted in a hundred and sixty-three acre feet of water savings, uh, from that program. So the program that I think we're, uh, the staff is considering right now, we're, uh, bringing to, for the board's consideration, uh, is this conserve CRW, and this is under development. So this is a very rough thumbnail sketch of, uh, where, you know, I think we need to be headed. So some of the important elements of this program are voluntary, temporary, and compensated, so non-present setting. Uh, the participants need to demonstrate water savings, uh, in this year and twenty-twenty-three, because that coincides with the funding cycle. This is not to say that the funding, uh, ends in twenty-twenty-three, but, uh, as we stand here today, uh, that's the, uh, the terms of the program. Uh, we think that, you know, if the, uh, participants, uh, enroll in this program, uh, we might consider a temporary waiver, uh, the irrigation water availability assessment for the participants, because they're not using that water. And we will recover that, uh, cost, uh, through, you know, our pricing structure. So, um, you know, to, the, the important number here is, you know, we think that we could probably, uh, fund this program up to two hundred dollars an acre foot, uh, reimbursable net, uh, to the participants. And again, this funding is, uh, provided by external sources, so it will have no, uh, impact to our budget, you know, particularly the canal fund. So, um, in terms of program schedule, and again, this is very rough, but, um, because of the urgency of this program, uh, and, you know, we're thinking about, uh, starting no later than twenty-twenty-three, uh, it kind of compresses the, uh, the schedule for our activities. So I'll walk you through this very, very briefly.
So you're not going to get any water savings in twenty-twenty-two?
We would like to start in twenty-twenty-two, but again, uh, there's a, you know, a lag period of developing the program and getting, you know, the word out there and getting the, you know, the irrigators and the growers, you know, aware of this program and being able to sign on. So, you know, if we can do it, you know, the latter part of, uh, twenty-twenty-two, you know, it'd be great. And I think in talking to Metropolitan, uh, I think they want us to, you know, come on board, uh, sooner rather than later. But I would say twenty-twenty-three was the latest, you know, January first of twenty-twenty-three. So if, if I may walk you through this, um, you know, the program very, very quickly and to see where, you know, the board's inputs, uh, are. So, uh, this month, you know, we're doing a lot of research on this, and we've been doing a lot of outreach, uh, to other agencies like IED and Metropolitan. Uh, we talked to Bard Water District, and I've talked to Arizona, because they've got a pretty active program about, you know, what their construct looks like, you know, for the, um, for their conservation programs. We're developing a survey and fact sheet, uh, in fact, you have that in front of you in hard copies. Uh, I apologize for not having the, uh, fact sheet electronically, but, uh, we literally finished that last night, uh, so, you know, didn't think that was prudent to, you know, show it publicly, uh, before the board had a chance to look at it. So, uh, with this survey and fact sheet, I think it, uh, provides us some basis, uh, for that level of interest that is here in the valley. Staff has been doing some reconnaissance work on, you know, some potential areas, uh, of ag where, you know, there, there may be some considerations, you know, for some savings. Uh, so today, we're, uh, giving the update to the board, and we want to have this update, uh, before we start our outreach efforts, uh, because again, I think y'all are well-connected to community, and staff didn't say they was too wise to, um, get this survey out there before we had a chance to at least update the board on, uh, the plan. So sometime after today, yeah, and between now and May, May seventeenth, which is the official workshop, I think with the growers, uh, where we will be, again, redistributing the survey and then, you know, walking the, uh, potential participants, uh, interested parties on the elements and the details of the program. Uh, we got a lot of work to do. Uh, I think one of the things that, uh, well, we definitely need the board's input on and help, uh, is the outreach effort. Uh, who do we outreach to? I think we've talked to, uh, you know, thinking about, uh, I think there's, you know, the, the, um, ag, um, conservation work, uh, work group, I think there's various, um, uh, agricultural, um, uh, industry groups, I think there's, you know, personal outreach that we can do. Again, I think if we're not careful, you know, we could spend a lot of time on this, uh, without a lot of productive effort. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, sensitive, uh, to, you know, making this go forward, uh, without, uh, spending any unnecessary effort, and also given the timeline that we have, we don't have a lot of time to waste. So I think, uh, the, you know, next month or so, there's going to be some strong outreach efforts, uh, you know, depending, unless the board says no, you know, we don't need to do this. And in May, we're going to continue developing a package, and so the package is going to look like, we say policy here, but really is more or less resolution for the board to, to adopt, um, you know, come, come June, uh, to formalize this process. Uh, we're going to finish the application, uh, for, uh, for the participants, and also we're going to try to, uh, have some draft agreements, you know, with the agencies. Metropolitan Water District is going to be the, uh, the keeper of this program for California, which I'm happy about, because I think we've got good working relationship with them. And I think it streamlines the process for the application as well as the payments. So we're already starting to discuss this with Metropolitan. Uh, undoubtedly, there will be some forbearance agreements that are needed, um, you know, with, with reclamation and with the other, uh, parties on the river, that they don't grab this, you know, this conserved water. And then, uh, participant agreements, because I think, uh, CVWD wants to be the, uh, the face of this program, you know, for the valley. Uh, certainly, I think, uh, Palaverdi Irrigation District's program, I think, uh, Metropolitan has direct contracts with their growers, so that's another model. But I don't think that, that's probably the best way to go down, but, you know, certainly we can have some discussions on that. So CVWD will have the contracts, uh, and agreements with the, uh, with the participants, and then we'll have the, uh, agreement with Metropolitan, and then, you know, we'll become, uh, we'll become the intermediary in terms of the funding stream, we'll pay the growers, uh, based on, you know, their participation first, and then we'll recover that money, uh, and get it back from Metropolitan, um, after, uh, afterwards. So it's a cash flow issue. In, uh, in May, we're going to have a, a workshop, uh, where we're going to be distributing the survey and, uh, give the participants a chance to ask us questions. We're giving the participants, uh, a good, uh, solid two weeks to return, uh, the survey, and the survey itself is pretty simple. Um, and again, you know, it was done intentionally to be simple. And, uh, after that, uh, we'll try to finalize this, get the attorneys review of the package, and, uh, if we're successful, and, uh, you know, and the board, you know, thinks there's , uh, value in this, we'll come back to the board, uh, at the last meeting of the fiscal year, uh, on June twenty-seventh, and, uh, for your consideration adoption, at which time we can open up the program formally, uh, to the participants. So we're going to be spending, you know, a lot of, uh, you know, the rest, well, most of July and August, you know, to, uh, get, uh, the, uh, participants enrolled. And, um, you know, September and November, you know, we're going to continue the efforts, but September, uh, is when we have to submit our twenty-twenty-three Colorado River Water Order, and this is kind of reminded for me, uh, of the things that we have to do. And in November, we submit our revised twenty-twenty-two Water Order. Uh, so again, these are details that, uh, you know, the board may not necessarily be all that interested in, but there's got to be a mechanism that we account for, um, you know, how we capture this water and how it's stored and, you know, get credit for it. So, uh, again, uh, Director Bianco's point, uh, can we do this in twenty-twenty-two? Absolutely. Uh, will we be able to do that? You know, I don't know. I mean, you know, as you can see, this is already a pretty aggressive timeline, um, but, you know, I would like to be optimistic that we can get some savings in twenty-twenty-two. So I want to also give, uh, the board a sense of the payment and verification example, uh, and this is not locked in, but this is, again, I think when we go talk, uh, to the participants in May, I think they're going to want as many specific details as possible. So, um, what we're thinking is, let's say that conveniently, you know, the last date that we can actually get this program going is January twenty-twenty-three, because you want to demonstrate, say, twelve months of savings. And, you know, we're not living in, you know, just twelve months, because I think other programs have talked about seasonal fallow, um, you know, like in Bard, for example, you know, they, they fallow during the summer, and then they come back like, you know, during the fall and the winter for their, you know, really productive, uh, high-value winter vegetable crops. Uh, but let's say that we start in January twenty-twenty-three, uh, so what does that look like? So before the participants start, um, you know, we have to have reviewed their application. I don't know if Metropolitan needs to look, uh, at their application as well, but, you know, we need to build some time in that, we need to execute the form, and we need to, um, uh, look at initial field check. And then afterwards, you know, if it's a twelve-month program, uh, we're thinking like mid-year or so, uh, in, in May, beginning of Ju-June, you know, we go back out, we do field check, uh, the participants, you know, after everything looks good, participants just submit for reimbursement in their paperwork, and we would cut them a check for probably like half the water savings, because it's half the year. And then kind of rolling on, September, November are Colorado River Water Orders, uh, for that respective years. And then let's say that, you know, the program does indeed end, uh, you know, at the end of twenty-twenty-three, begin twenty-twenty-four, then we will do the final field check and then do a final reimbursement. So it's pretty simplistic, but, you know, just wanted the board to know that, uh, staff has been looking at this, and we've talked to other agencies, and I think this two, uh, payment schedule, um, kind of works. I have to know for the Bard program, you know, theirs, theirs go from gen, uh, generally, I think, April to like July, so they pay their growers ahead of time. Uh, I think, you know, the first payment is when they, they enroll, and the second payment is like midway through, but it's so short, you know, for four months, uh, that I think they can afford to do that. But again, this is just for consideration, you know, none of the details have been completely baked yet. So with that, um, I think, you know, we've, I think we're pretty well, you know, underway in terms of like, you know, some of the initial thoughts. You know, there's a lot more detail that need to be fleshed, uh, you know, fleshed out, and we've opened up this, uh, special website, uh, it's called Conserve CRW, uh, where we'll open up, uh, all correspondence, you know, all questions, uh, directed to this website, the staff will be monitoring it, and then the survey, um, and all the other, you know, potentially even the applications will come through this particular site. So, you know, with that, um, you know, I look forward to, you know, the board's input, uh, you know, please let me know if, you know, you don't want staff to kind of continue on this, because I can see this being, you know, a bit of a, you know, a, a work effort.
Okay.
So with that, I'll open up to any questions.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. I, I appreciate, uh, I've been asking about, about this, as you know, so I'm glad to see this come forward and moving, uh, forward as well. The only thought I have is on the survey form itself.
Okay.
Um, you know, this might be getting too much in the weeds too early, but I think the electronic version of the survey that you mentioned at the bottom of the page should really be moved to someplace more visible on the top of the page or, um, as a headline in the, um, uh, on, on the new website, because that will stimulate, I think, more support. I mean, you know, these folks, like everyone else, have very little time to do this, and I think that would help get you a better response.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, you might also make it clear that they could just submit by one of those three methods. It sounds like we're asking them to do all three, but I know we're not.
No, good point. No, I certainly don't want that to be.
Please return the survey either by.
Yeah, one of those.
By all three men.
I think it's going to be a pilot program, I mean, the first year, I mean, for, for something that's going to, that may or may not happen later on, because there's so many variables in this.
Right.
That, that, the, the Water District can't get all those variables down and, and figure it out.
Right.
You know, and, and farmers don't make decisions because if something comes out like the, the next day, I mean, you know, like, for twenty-twenty-two, it's not really realistic to me that you're, you're gonna, I mean, for permanent crops, you know, if it's, if it's lemons, which are citrus that we already have here, they would have already been pulled out. that we already have here, they would have already been pulled out. I mean, if you've already, you're too far down the line for someone to pull it out at harvest time or right before harvest in 2022. So that's already over. You know, grapes.
Director Bianco, I'm sorry.
You have time, you know, vegetables here. I mean, those are the three main things that we do here. You know, there's a fall and a spring, you know, you know, and and pretty soon, the for the for the fall, those decisions are going to be made soon, where you have to buy your plants, buy your seed. I mean, all that stuff's done way in advance.
So. Right.
I wouldn't expect much in 2022, no matter how hard we try.
Well, I think that's the realistic input that I'm looking for. I think, you know, we still, I think we still have to, you know, go out and make the pitch.
Yeah, you might be able to get some winter veg.
Everybody's, every district's different, you know, like PIDs is going to be different than than CBWD, you know?
Right.
And I like CBWD getting involved, because what does Metropolitan Water District know about agriculture in the Coachell Valley?
Right.
Not much.
Right. No, and in conversations, I think with, you know, PVID and with, you know, Bard, for instance, you know, their programs are pretty mature. I think PVID is a 30-year program. You know, I think they're, you know, on the, you know, two, I mean, they're probably like two-thirds of the way through. They're like 15 to 20 years in. So it's a very, you know, well-worn wagon tracks that they're going down.
But they have, but they but they farm alfalfa.
But they farm alfalfa.
And all these different crops that we don't have any of that here.
Right.
So it's very, very different. I mean, that that is, that is, that's like turning things on and off. It's.
Yeah, but you do. I mean, there is some some sedan grass and and stuff that people might just not plant.
But it's such, it's so small numbers. It's not what you're looking for. I mean, you're looking for on the graph that you sent us, you know, maybe where where you you want to get to maybe 20,000 acre feet.
Well, that would be really, really ambitious and really great if we can do that, but.
A thousand acre feet or 500 acre feet is 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 not really, really putting a, it's not a college try. I mean, it's, that's like.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Anthony. And then at on one level, and then there's another level of the funding is temporary. It's very short term. If we move, if we hit these other triggers in 2024, 2025 of the DCP, we're obligated to make those contributions back to the system. So then with this short-term program, if we could incentivize maybe some early permanent crop type of 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 fallowing, let's say somebody's ready to to, you know, maybe they'll spend three or four more years, you know, nursing along a, you know, a field that's, you know, barely making any money. And this will provide them an incentive to take that out now. I know a number of old date groves that I drive past, and I said, you know, why didn't they take that out five years ago? Maybe that will be the incentive this year to take that out, right? Because they have those opportunities.
I know, but you're, remember, you're already too far down. You've already.
So.
You've already put so much money into it right now.
I know, but look.
You have to wait.
Look, in 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 November, December of this year, 2022, you're going to harvest your, the date crop off that. In August, there'll be guys who harvest the grape crops. And citrus, it might be into January. But by the end of the year, lemons are mostly off. So it seems like there's a good timing, that November to early spring, on maybe some permanent crop types of removals. So I think that that would be beneficial. The seed guys, you're right, if they've already bought their seed, if they've done this or that, that's why it's important to kind of push out, I think, the program as fast as we can now to to let people know.
That this is available.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you'll probably get some winter veg guys that, even if they have bought their seed, they might decide not to plant because their incentive is fairly, you know, they will use the seed the following year.
Winter veg, how much, how much do they use in three months?
Of water?
Yeah.
Well, they would, yeah, some of it, yeah, some of it would get used in in this calendar year, and some of it would get used in next calendar year. So you'd get some in this year. You know, the crop, these are crops that would be grown, you know, maybe planted in in October or something and harvested in February or whatever, March. So you get, you're going to go across two years. Yeah.
Okay, so maybe just close out the discussion. I'm not hearing any opposition to, you know, opening up the survey and so on. So.
Yeah, no, you know, I'm kind of bullish on it. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like it's a robust incentive that should be well-received.
I don't.
I've been wrong before.
I'm different, but we'll see, but we'll see.
Yeah.
I don't think you're going to get.
And think about, I mean, if there's, I mean, you make the argument about the the dates, which I, which makes sense. And I'm sure there's, there's table grapes out there that are, that are limping along that that, you know, maybe they take them out.
They've already been pulled. It's already done.
Well, I know mostly have already been pulled. No, I mean, I have, I have some permanent crops, but they're, it's on well water. So that won't do me any good. We're going to pull it anyways, but we won't get any money for it because it's on the wrong water. Whatever. Okay, yeah, Robert, thank.
We should try it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's worth the effort.
I've been wrong before.
Okay, thanks.
I think it also sends out a good message to the public that everybody is looking to participate in this effort. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Robert.
Thanks, Robert. Good job, Robert.
Conservation program. Oops. No, I don't want to download. So this gets us, I think now we're at 10A, Board General comments. Why don't we start with Director Nelson?
Yeah, I had no comments this morning. None for me.
Okay.
I just want to say, we've got to fix this system. This is not good. It's the other system was way more easier.
You know, it's now that now that we know how to click on stuff, it's a little better than what, I mean, I, I felt locked out over the weekend, but.
I just want to be able to go and 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 see a meeting that we had three months ago without without having to look for the date, look for what we did and all that stuff.
So, yeah, all that sire is gone, huh? All the past.
I R is completely offline officially. It it reached end of life in, actually in December, and we were fortunate enough that IT was able to kind of keep it alive until we transitioned into this new system.
Technology is going to get easier and not harder.
The new systems are more of a cloud base, so they have moved away from applications on on your iPad, anything like Agenda Deco. We looked at several different systems, and they all essentially were in the process. This is really kind of the new way that the systems are going. We will, we'll definitely, I've heard your comments, we will work with the vendor. We'll, we'll see what we can do to make this a little bit easier. I will be scheduling training for each of you. It'll be a 20 to 30-minute training where you can ask some questions. We'll give you some of the tips, how to access. We'll create a user login for you and so forth. And we will do our best to make sure that the system is something that you can use.
Yeah, thanks.
But just in a nutshell, when you go to the website, you open the meeting, click on the item, it then cascades down the attachments. And if you push on the eyeball, not the cloud and the arrow, it comes up pretty quick. And then get back to the agenda, you just look for the meeting tab again across the top, and just hit that, and it'll take you back to the agenda.
It does, it does work that way.
Right. But it is harder to 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 use than the other ones.
Takes a little while to get used to.
Takes a little bit of getting used to.
Yeah. All right. Thanks. And.
I was very frustrated.
Yeah, no, I was too.
But I'm, I'm better off now than I was when I got here.
It's, it's getting better. Little learning curve. When you say click on the eyeball, it's like, I haven't seen an eyeball. I've spent hours with this thing, but but now I found it. So, so after this, we have a board request for future agenda items.
So that's a new item that we added. So when, in looking at the agenda format, we thought that if we had a section where the board could request future agenda items, it might be easier if there's something, whether it's a future item or something that has come up, that the board could at this time request those items.
Right.
One of the things we are figuring out, and it's something that's in the works, is how the board would add items to that. I don't want to get into too much of that discussion because it is not agenda. But we are looking at a couple of different options as far as how the board would like to address that, whether any requests made by the board would be added, whether the request would not necessarily need a vote, but a second. So if Director Bianco has an item, somebody would just have to support his request. So we'll bring that back at a later time. But it is hopefully a section that we, that will help the board adding future items to the agenda.
Right. Thanks. Okay, into the meetings. The first one is, was mine, just kind of newly on this Western Growers Board, but they have a water committee that is is pretty good. It's California and Arizona. And we actually met in Phoenix on the 23rd. We had what I thought was a pretty candid presentation by Tom Buschkatsky with Arizona Department of Water Resources. I mean, unfortunately, all the news is bad these days. I mean, they're in a, they're in a tough spot. But, you know, one of his comments, you know, that this 500-plus plan, which is a two-year plan, that that it really needs to be a much longer plan because it's going to, you know, it's not going to solve the problem in two years. But anyways, good, good committee there. And I was impressed with his presentation. Salt and Sea Authority on the 24th. Director Estrada is, nobody else was there. 24th California Caucus, Director Nelson.
Yeah, we met with the Section 5 contractors and a few others regarding issues on the river, discussing possible Department of Interior and U.S. Federal Reclamation Actions on the river to deal with ongoing dry hydrology. So it was a productive meeting.
Yeah. 25th, that was not, no, no. 26th study session, that was on the, on there, who was attending. The 30th, we had the Joint Water Policy Advisory Committee meeting. It was a Zoom meeting. I was on that call. Director Estrada was also. Kind of went through the.
You strand.
Yeah, I probably, I had some notes. I don't think it's anything really notable. Pretty standard. Legislative Committee on the 31st. Director Agala.
Thank you. Yeah. So we had our usual monthly, Willie Snouts monthly, meeting with our state and federal consultants. And actually, I think, just to save time, Victoria did an excellent job in providing a summary, I think, in the water drop of the legislative discussion we had. But I, so I would encourage you to read that. But I wanted to mention that it appears as though, as of today, there's about a $60 billion surplus in the governor's budget, and they believe about $20 billion of that is going to be discretionary. That could provide some funding for additional projects that we may be submitting for. And that was it.
Thank you. We had this March 31st discussion, Director Nelson and I, with Robert on ag conservation, just kind of conceptualizing how it should look and creating what we saw today.
And I brought my high dry hydrology graphs to that meeting.
Oh, my God. March 30, oh, these are both Director Estrada. Are there any other meetings that we need to report on that were not listed?
I'll do it next time. I've got, I didn't make my list.
Okay. Fair enough. Is there a motion to approve the meetings that were reported on?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passed. General Manager Report.
Yes, sir. Just quickly to bring you up to speed on where we are with COVID. We've got one person at home right now who is a direct contact. We've got zero qualifying qualifying cases for the month of April. As of April 11th, we've had, we have 458 of our employees vaccinated. So against a total authorized strength of 569, that's about 80%. If you look at the current onboard at the end of February, it's about 87% of our employees are vaccinated. That's all I've got, sir.
Counsel Report.
And I will pass today, Mr. President, in light of the miles to go before.
Any department reports?
I don't see anybody jumping up to come to the front. No, sir. We thought about having one, but then we thought maybe we ought to wait. Maybe next time.
All right. At this time, the board will recess into closed session to address the items listed on the agenda. We will reconvene and report out of closed session when we, when that's finished.
14, there were two items to report. On item 13B, on a motion by Director Nelson, a second by Director Bianco, and a vote of 401 with a question absent, the board authorized the filing of a petition for writ of certiorari with the U.S. Supreme Court seeking review of the amended Ninth Circuit panel opinion reversing the district's court's dismissal of the Navajo Nation's Beach of Trust claim. On the item for 13E, a motion was made by Director Bianco, second by President Powell, and a vote of 401 to authorize the filing of a of a complaint against Lead-A-Roe Incorporated in regard to work performed, I'm sorry, for the work that was performed for the replacement of the Warp 10 Recycle Water Basin Floating Cover. On both items, the vote was 301, not 401. That was the end of closing.
Thank you. And with no further business, we are adjourned.